We're going to call this city council meeting to order. This meeting is being held in council chambers, which are open for public attendance and participation. The meeting will also be livestreamed for public viewing but not participation at the link identified in the agenda. Emailed comments sent and received by the city clerk at least 24 hours before tonight's meetings have been distributed to the city council. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Shaw.
Here.
Vice Mayor Boomgarden.
You'll be late.
Councilmember Cole. Councilmember Kirchner.
Here.
Councilmember Pesquale.
Here.
Great, we have a quorum. Mr. Chaffin, will you please tell us what our closed session items are this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, there's no one in the public comment on closed session. No one in the public, sorry about that. In closed session, we have several items. Item A is public employee discipline dismissal release pursuant to government code section 5495.5 and 5495.7B1. Item B is liability claim. Claimant Daniel Van Doom, claims number 2531, agency claimed against the city of Uba City. Item C is liability claim. Claimant is Mary Carruthers, claim number 2531, agency claimed against the city of Uba City. Item D is liability claim. Claimant is Jonathan Soto, claim number 2533, agency claimed against the city of Uba City. Item E is liability claim. Claimant is Faith Melkor, claim number 2313, agency claimed against the city of Uba City. And that's the items, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any public comments on any of the closed session items? Did everybody jump up at once? All right, hearing none, we will move into closed session. All right, we'll call tonight's meeting to order. This meeting is being held in the council chambers, which are open for public attendance and participation. The meeting will also be livestreamed for public viewing but not participation at the link identified in the agenda. Emailed comments sent and received by the city clerk at least 24 hours before tonight's meeting have already been distributed to the city council. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Shaw.
Here.
Vice Mayor Boomgarden.
Present.
Councilmember Cole.
Here.
Councilmember Kirchner.
Here.
Councilmember Pesquale.
Here.
All right, we have a quorum. If you will join me in standing, we have the invocation tonight given by Pastor Bob Fichetti. And if you'll remain standing after that, Councilmember Kirchner, will you lead us in the pledge afterwards?
Father, I thank you for every opportunity to call on you and ask for your blessing, your encouragement. And more than anything, I pray the decisions that are made by the government of Uba City that the influence goes out from here and not comes from the outside in, that you grant them wisdom and understanding way beyond their years. That, Father, those decisions that are made are not just for today or tomorrow, but long-term decisions that'll even go past everything that they are familiar with, that this city and this county might be blessed by decisions that you encourage them to make in wisdom. And I thank you for it, Lord. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Okay. Yep. All right. Mr. Chaffin, do we have anything to report out of closed session this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have two items to report from closed session. Item B in closed session, the city council authorized a notice of rejection due to non-jurisdiction. And item C, the city council authorized a finding of a notice of insufficiency. Also, please note for the record that Councilmember Boomgarden was present at 5:04 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the next item, which is agenda modifications. Does the council have any agenda modifications? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on into our presentations portion, and we've got two presentations this evening. Before I go into the next two items, I want to bring forward a point of clarification, and I will defer to our city attorney here in just a moment. We received a lot of cards tonight concerning item one especially. That is not a business item, and it's not being discussed tonight as a business item, and no action will be taken. With that, under ceremonial presentations or simply presentations to the council, there is no public discussion on those at that time because they are simply presentations. So to accommodate that, because we do also want to make sure that everyone's voice is heard, we can move those comments, if anyone feels like they still want to speak, under agenda item three, which are items that are not on the agenda. But just please keep in mind that when you make comments, it is comments, it's not questions and answers, and we cannot take any action on anything that's not been agendicized as a business item. So I just want to be crystal clear, since we have a lot of cards and such tonight. Mr. Chaffin, is there anything that I've missed?
You're 100% correct, thank you.
Okay, perfect. So with that, we will go into the first presentation, which is the status update for the roundabout at Sandborne and McCune. And Mr. Wolf, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, thank you. So as you'd mentioned, this is a presentation item, which is a little bit different than normal. I'm not asking for actual recommendations or actions at this time, it's just more of a public forum and opportunity for council to provide their thoughts on this project. So to start, I'm going to give a brief history of how we got to this point of the pilot project for the roundabout, then we'll go through the findings after installation of the roundabout, some alternatives to the roundabout option, then council thoughts at the end. So for the project history, in July of 2024, there was a vehicle incident or accident at the intersection of Sandborne and McCune. So here's a photo of the accident. What had happened was a vehicle was traveling at a high rate of speed southbound on Sandborne Road and took a high-speed turn on McCune. In doing so, they lost control of their vehicle, ended up hitting a tree that was in the parkway. Had that tree not been there, you could see that the car may have likely gone through this retaining wall and/or into the resident's home. So as a result of that, the resident in the area had reached out to Sutter County and Uba City staff, wanting to discuss proposed options for traffic calming in the area. So as a little bit of a background, Sandborne Road, it's kind of an odd scenario because it seems like it's residential, but it's actually a collector roadway that will pick up a lot of the vehicles from the residential areas like McCune and those interior neighborhoods and provide a kind of a thoroughfare to get out of the neighborhood and get onto Walton Avenue down south to Lincoln. What's unique about this is on the east side, you have a lot of homes, and on the west side, it's pretty open. And if you look down, it's a wide-open corridor, and what that means to some drivers is, hey, I don't have to be worried about my surroundings, I could drive fast. So we tend to have a speeding issue in this area. So staff met with the residents in summer of 2024, discussed options. Some of the items that we discussed were the want to have slower speed in the area. We wanted something that would be cost-effective, and we wanted to prevent dangerous turns from occurring again. What we came up with was if we install a roundabout that has a median island in the middle, you won't have any safe turn issues anymore. It would, the idea of doing it as a pilot project, we could buy materials that could be installed but then also removed and relocated to another location. And if effective, we could use the data that we gathered from this to leverage grant funds in the future. And if ineffective, we can remove everything, put things elsewhere. Based on feedback, staff created a design for a temporary roundabout. So then in November of 2024, staff brought the design for the roundabout to council for approval. This is the proposed design. There were a couple minor changes, which you'll see with the actual install, where we have moved to the ADA ramp to put a temporary one in here to facilitate crossings safely outside of the roundabout area. So summer 2025, our maintenance staff went and installed the roundabout. What you're looking at in the middle is you have five sand crash barrels, which each barrel has 2,100 pounds of sand inside. You have bolt-down rumber bumpers around the entire roundabout. You have knockdown-style delineators, meaning if they are hit, or say you need a fire truck to come through, it can run the delineators down, they'll pop right back up, and they're all high visibility. So we did a speed study prior to and after the installation of the roundabout. And what we found, so we have positives, negatives, and we have quite a bit of feedback from the residents, so I wanted to make sure I convey that as well. So positives, we did see a 10% decrease in the prevailing speed. So the prevailing speed in the area is 41 miles an hour. It went down to 38 miles an hour between McCune and Cherry Street. There was a 24% volume reduction, so about 171 vehicles less per day, and dangerous turning movements that would, that could potentially cause issues and crashes in the neighboring homes would be reduced because you have about 10,500 pounds of sand barrels in the middle of the intersection that people need to slowly navigate around. The negatives, we found that this roundabout is a little small, it's difficult for large trucks to navigate. We need, in order to remediate that, we'd need a larger diameter roundabout to accommodate large trucks and delivery vehicles. And to put that in perspective, the diameter of the roundabout right now is 48 feet. We would need to widen that diameter to 60 feet, so about six foot both ways, to make it accessible for large trucks, delivery trucks, et cetera. Residents have reported that there have been improper turn movements, which unfortunate, but we've seen that in other locations. And then some of the residents have not been a fan of reduced parking adjacent. There's two homes that are affected by parking. One resident is fine with the reduction of parking because of the safety improvements. That was the one that had their house hit. The other one was not affected, but they were not in favor of losing parking. So in general, the resident feedback, we had some in favor and many opposed, and those residents that opposed have actually circulated a petition for consideration of alternatives. In the next slide, I kind of summarized some of the comments that we received, one of which being difficulty in navigating large vehicles, improper tearing movements have been experienced. Some people want to replace stop sign, or replace the roundabout with stop signs and speed humps, and we can get into that a little bit further, or a little bit later on. Need for more enforcements or cameras to catch reckless drivers. And then consider center medians, dedicated turn lanes, flashing stop signs, or additional pavement markings. So I'll go through in the next few slides. I laid out about five different options that the city can go through, some of the positives and negatives associated with each of them, to kind of come up with some ideas across the board of what may be good alternatives. First one was just leave the roundabout as is, no cost, no change. So that's how it looks, and it wouldn't remain. The second option would be increase the size of the roundabout for larger vehicles. In order to do that, I've shown the drawing here, and you can see the roundabout size has increased quite a bit to a 68-foot diameter. And you'd need about an eight-foot by 40-foot paving section in here to account for this additional turning area right here, all within city's right-of-way, but it would impact the residents over in this area. It'd also be additional $10,000 to $15,000, but it would accommodate delivery trucks and large residential vehicles. Option three, remove the roundabout, replace it with an all-way stop. It would be a minor cost for stop signs, safety materials that were used in the roundabout could be salvaged for future use, though this option would be less likely to prevent dangerous turning movements. And as I've kind of mentioned before, stop signs aren't meant to be used as a speed reduction method, they're supposed to be used for issues with access right away from side streets. So you'd likely see people would come to a stop and then take off, burn out, maybe. Some, prior to this project, the resident adjacent said that they'd experienced people doing donuts in the area at night. So just some things that could happen. Option three, this is what the layout would look like, so installing a crosswalk north-south on Sandborne Road, putting in stop signs northbound and southbound. Pretty minor cost. We actually have a striping project that's going to be in this adjacent area, and based on thoughts from council and public moving forward, we could incorporate this area and incur a cost savings. Option four, install additional countermeasures. So some of these additional countermeasures that are recommended by CMU TCD include solar flashing stop signs, like I said, not a speed control measure, but more for safety, ingress and egress onto the exiting collector. Speed feedback signs, either one of those solar options run about $3,000 per solar sign. Additional striping, including lane reduction, so narrowing the lanes from about 12-foot or more down to 10-foot. Studies show that reduction in lane width correlates directly with slower speeds. And like I said, striping is already planned for said area, so it could be something that we just work into that project as well. Median pinch points, this would be putting physical barriers in the middle of the street in order to cause vehicles to have to slow down and navigate through pinch point areas, which wouldn't cause any issues in terms of navigability. Any vehicle should be able to get through it, it would just cause people to have to slow down. And then you have other options like chicanes or intersection boltouts, which are other options of pinch points and choke mechanisms. So option four, this top-left one, is the median idea, and really what this would be would be taking one of the sand barrels from the roundabout, placing it in the center of the road, and then causing, creating an island for people to have to slowly drive around with the delineators from the roundabout on the outside to squeeze them in. There would be a reduction in parking in this area, about 50-foot per each one of those, and the recommended amount to be installed would be four along the entire length from Lincoln to McCune. Second, or the second countermeasure mentioned, reduce lane width and install bike route striping. So we'd be talking about reducing the lane width to 10 feet, installing these sharrows, so it'd be shared use between cars and bikes, and then having a 10-foot park lane. As you can see here, 10-foot is plenty to accommodate a pickup truck here. And then lastly, the one we mentioned earlier, solar flashing, feedback signs, and stop signs, these can create reductions in speed and reductions in, or can create traffic calming as well, but they are about $3,000 apiece. And then option five, combination of all of the items above. So with that, my final thoughts are the area is subject to speeding due to its wide-open feel and no obstructions, causing people to have the need to consciously drive or slow down. The current roundabout has reduced the area's speed and traffic volume and likelihood of dangerous turning movements. Some residents are unhappy about the improper turn movements, reduced parking, difficulty navigating with large vehicles, and feel other options would be better, and various alternatives are available for consideration and discussion. And with that, I'd like to say Uba City Public Works strives to provide safe roadways while considering requests from the residents. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Is there any questions from the council?
To the mayor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for that very thorough presentation, Mr. Wolf. You did mention that enlarging, one of the options, enlarging the roundabout would impact certain properties. Can you go more into detail with that?
Yes, so can't really see it in this photo, but there's a residence right here. They do have two driveways, kind of a U-shaped driveway at their property. Expanding the roundabout may make things a little bit more difficult for them to get in and out, but we could leave the option to leave it open on this side here, which we've already done with the current. It's just a little bit further encroachment towards the property.
I would like to indulge, indulge me for a minute. I would like to thank the neighborhood for showing up and voicing their concerns and bringing the petition. I'm a neighbor, I live in the area, and Sandborne, Walton, Lincoln, 99, they're a drag strip. And I hear it every night, every evening, it's a drag strip. And I hear you, I understand what you're saying, I have the same concerns that you do. And so I appreciate the effort that went in to participate this evening. I think I'm going to leave it there. I'll leave my comments at there because I could probably talk about this all night, and I don't think everybody wants to hear about this. But as Mayor said a moment ago, we won't make any final decisions on this tonight. This was an opportunity to discuss the issue and to hear your comments. So thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When you mentioned larger vehicles, it's a problem, what are you, what are you talking about? Is it an F-250, or is it a delivery van? Is it a prime delivery van? What is it that's having problems getting through the roundabout?
Yeah, so I would say UPS trucks, large delivery trucks like that, but we've also received word that some F-250s have had harder times getting out, having to do three-point turns or back up to make the turn. And in researching, or when this was initially designed, the idea was to kind of copy the pilot project that Marysville had done, in which we kept the same diameter they had used. The only caveat was they had a little bit extra room on the outside to manage it. And digging further into this one, we were able to remove, or relocate and remove some of the ballards, sorry, the lineaters to help that. But yeah, long bed F-250s with tight turning radius do have a hard time getting in.
Have a few more comments. Number one, I guess as these proposed options come up and they impact existing residences, I'm deeply concerned about that. You know, those folks, obviously they want a safe neighborhood, but at the same time, this was not something that was existing probably when they purchased their property, and so therefore they're getting impacted. And whatever we decide as a council, I'm quite certain we'll take that into account. Is there a pedestrian safety issue there at all? I noticed the, you know, well-marked sidewalk or crosswalk, but you know, that's a concern to me, especially if they're speeding.
You know, I haven't received any direct feedback that there's any issues with pedestrians in this location. I'm sure I'd be open to hearing what the residents would have to say about personal encounters. I didn't see anything from the traffic injury database that showed injuries from pedestrians, but north-south, they do have existing accommodations, and with this improvement, we did continually allow for ADA accessible.
I do, well, last two comments. One is, I'm never in favor of speed bumps or anything that's going to cause that. And I know my friend, the fire chief back there, probably feels the same. They impact response times, and they are very difficult on emergency response vehicles, including ambulances. So you know, I'd be looking at, hopefully that's not necessarily the best or the one option that we would take a look at. But I know that the city has employed narrowing streets in other locations, and I know Sergeant Kraus is back here, he could probably speak a little bit to that as to its effectiveness. If, and I'm not saying you can't, Josh, but it seems to me that those work. I know Stabler Lane is one where we have made that, those changes. Is that still the fact, that when you put the striping on the road, narrow down the lanes, that we do see reductions in speed?
Anecdotally, yes, we do. I see a reduction in the number of vacations that are running, but I also see that when we start focusing on area, which is also presented to a regarding change in roadway surface. Again, anecdotally, I have pulled statistics to show that, but we do see a reduction in the amount of enforcement that we do or the tickets that are issued in that location when we start seeing roadway markings that are more visible and plain to the drivers.
Okay. Again, the final comment is, it doesn't appear that this is the all, the solution. So I appreciate you providing us with the options, and as Councilmember Kirchner mentioned, you know, the citizen feedback, that's all hugely valuable to us when we get into situations like this, so thank you.
Mayor, if I may, just want to clarify one thing. The primary issue with turning isn't the entire roundabout, the primary issue being reported to us is westbound to southbound, this turning movement right here for larger vehicles. I would say, for example, the engineering department has Durango. I've driven this and was able to make a full 360-degree turn in a large SUV, but then also something like an F-250 or a delivery truck with a longer wheelbase, it makes sense that they're having, they need a larger diameter to accommodate that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council?
To the mayor? So I'm actually a big fan of roundabouts, but I think in this case, it's just, based on the study, not going to work because 10% is just, in the reduction of speed, not quite enough. But as Mark mentioned, with Stabler Lane, narrowing the lane, I know that when a place gets the reputation for, don't go fast on that road, it's a speed trap, it is, that's a good thing, that's enough for resident, or maybe not residents, but people driving through there to actually slow down, and it lasts. So I know our police are really tied and very busy too, but it would be good to have a stronger police presence there to scare people for a few months. And obviously, I don't have the answer for how to slow people down, but roundabout in this case, I love them, but not, not a great spot for that. Thank you.
Councilmember Pesquale, you got any comments or questions?
Yes, sir. I would echo just about everything that's been said here tonight, other than the fact that this doesn't seem to be working for everyone. I like having choices, and I thank all of you for coming here too, so we can see some of those choices, and we will try to make the best decision for this area. Personally, I am in favor of speed bumps, Mark. They use them in Sacramento extensively, and I don't go speeding through Sacramento downtowns either. With that, I will conclude my comment.
All righty, thank you. Josh, we've all kind of hit around one of the major problems, and the major problem is really not so much the road, it's the drivers on the road. I was just over in District Two, coming down Stabler Monday, and Tesla pulls right out of, I think it was Jamie or something, I mean, dang near hit me, just didn't stop probably 40, 45 miles an hour right out in front of me and gone. So we have this problem all over town. What makes this one unique, that's beat six. We don't patrol it, the sheriff's department patrols it. So I'm going to ask the question that I know needs to be asked. What has the cooperation really been from the sheriff and his team in getting out there and doing something on Sandborne, when we know it's a drag strip? It's, you know, that's the main problem, because we have it all over town. The problem is, is we don't have our city law enforcement there patrolling it because it's under the sheriff. So what has been the response to get them out there to help us curtail this? Because that's got to be a key part of this.
So at the initial meeting with the residents, a sheriff's deputy was present. Post that meeting, there was no, no presence with them, though we didn't specifically reach out to them either. I would say, I guess this would be a better question for Sergeant Kraus in terms of beat six and what Sutter County's capacity is for enforcing this area, if you know. I would say in general, though, the only way to stop people from driving dangerously is to actually install physical items that they need to navigate around. That's the only way to slow down.
Yeah, no, I agree. It's like Mike said, it's going to be all things, but you know, to what you've heard already up here, we, we can't just put measures in and inconvenience residents like, like Mark said, you know, that wasn't the issue when they built those homes, and there's nice homes all along Sandborne. And part of the problem is an enforcement issue. So you know, I know we're not taking action on this, but the takeaway that I would like to leave, and, and you know, maybe we get nods from the councils, we need to be engaging with Sheriff Barnes, and he needs to do something about this with the Sutter County sheriffs, because that's their beat, that is the agreement that's been out there for almost 30 years. And I realize they only have so many officers, but this is, this is a serious issue, and we need their help. So whatever we can do as a council, I would offer it, but that has to be part of the equation, is getting them engaged to help us solve this problem. And is there any other questions or comments from you guys? None? All right, Mr. Wolf, thank you. When we get to agenda item three, I know we're going to hear from a lot of people, and I know that you'll have an update for us in the future based upon our comments tonight, the comments you're going to hear from the public shortly, and together we will figure this out, I'm sure, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf.
Thank you, council, and thank you residents for showing up.
Okay. We're going to move on to agenda item two, which is the Seek Parade update, or we've been calling it the Seek Festival because it's multiple days. So Sergeant Kraus, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you. Let me say in advance-
Let me say in advance, I apologize if there's any errors or spellings in this PowerPoint. I've been adding to it daily, including today. It was updated today. So this year, the Seek Festival is scheduled for Sunday, November 2nd of this year. It's, I believe, 11 days from now. The after-action review of the 24 parade took place in January, so immediately following, well, a month after the event last year. And the initial planning meetings for this year's event started in February. So we're at almost a year of pre-planning on this thing. New safety measures that we're putting in place this year, as we continuously try to improve it, this event grows and grows. So this year, we are contracting with Meridian Barricades, or they're actually subcontracting with Traffic Management Incorporated, TMI. They're the company that is being utilized for all of the traffic control throughout this event. They've been very good to work with. They are subcontracting with Meridian Barricades, which is a company, I believe they're based in Southern California, but they have very large actual security barricades that are capable of physically stopping vehicles, and they are considered security barriers as well as safety barriers. They will stop a car from running into a crowd of people and physically prevent cars from going outside of where they're supposed to go, which has been an issue for us in the past. The water barricades are effective, but they can be pushed by even people, definitely by cars, and that happens year to year. So this year, we have them lining on the bus routes and on various key points throughout the parade route to increase security and make our job a little bit easier, so we don't have to replace those barricades as they're pushed out of the way throughout the day. We are continuing to close down the neighborhood on Pepperwood and Quail Point. That's between Hooper and Madison. That area gets inundated with pedestrian and vehicle traffic on Friday and Saturday nights, the festivities leading up to the actual, actually Sunday's event. We are continuing to close that down to control traffic through there. We'll be working with Sutter County to allow cars in and out of that parking lot on the south side of the temple. But in an effort to keep the residents as secure as possible in their neighborhood, that area is going to be traffic controlled. We'll be allowing residents in, of course, unimpeded as much as possible, but any non-resident vehicle traffic especially is kept out of that area. We obtained property owner, so they didn't have, for a minute there, the parking lot that they used on El Margarita, this is getting to actual Sunday, was in escrow, it's being sold, so they weren't going to be able to use that, that 20-acre field. We provided access to another privately-owned field, it was 23 acres. This is for parking on El Margarita to facilitate cars parking there and then using the buses to get up to the, to the temple, which we've done for over 10 years now. The 20-acre field that we thought wasn't going to be there actually was re-secured by them, so they do have a 20-acre field on El Margarita. The additional field, it would be great if they got them both, but they haven't secured that second one. The high school, the River Valley High School has an east and a west parking lot. The east parking lot is quite large, I don't know what the exact number is, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of 300 or 400 cars can fit in there. The west parking lot is smaller, it's for faculty, about 150 cars can fit in there. The east parking lot is lost, it's under construction. The west parking lot is still open, it can accommodate about 150 or 160 cars. So we lost some parking on the east side of the school, but we still have it on the west. Parking attendance, that was a big problem for us last year, we had nobody to attend the fields. The police department actually took it when we saw it at about 10 o'clock. Access to the field had almost been lost, and then Traffic Management shuffled people to get down there. This year, we actually have contact with parking attendance provided by the temple. I have high hopes that that will work out better. Yuba concerns, Yuba Sutter Transit is not available for the bus service for this year, and that's a pretty big deal. They utilized 19 buses last year that ran for somewhere between 13 and 14 hours around the clock. There are 55 or better capacity buses, they're 55-passenger, they're quite large, and they ran from 7:00 in the morning until 6:30 or 7:00 at night, and they transported an estimated 33,000 people to and from the temple. That is an enormous amount of pedestrians from the south side of 20 up to the temple, which crosses State Route 20. We don't have those buses this year, and they've told the temple that they cannot continue to do this event for years, especially the last two years. And up until today, we had no buses contracted. Today, Amador Stage Lines has been contracted, they're a privately-owned bus charter company out of Sacramento. They did set aside 20 buses, and they're reserved from 7:30 in the morning until 6:00. That contract is signed, I have it in hand. I'm meeting with them later this week to go over the actual details. I'm not sure that they know everything that's involved in this and how long it actually is, but they are contracted for 12 hours. He put on there assisting traffic leaving the temple Friday and Saturday nights, which we do. It's a concern in here from last year. I think we worked out a pretty good system for allowing cars out of that parking lot. So I'm not, personally, I'm not too worried about that one. TMI has been contracted, they have a signed contract. One of the provisions that we put in the contract this year, again, we just got bus companies today, we didn't have bus companies before, we were very concerned, I was very concerned about the pedestrian issue. 30,000 people crossing State Route 20 is an awful lot of people, and that would absolutely congest Highway 20. So we had written into the contract with TMI that they put personnel at Harder and 20 to physically control traffic and allow pedestrians to cross through that intersection throughout the event. The temple refused that contract and forced them to come up with another one that didn't have people at Harder and 20. Today, we got the bus company, so hopefully it'll, will alleviate some of that issue. I'm still going to try to find some type of contingency to take control of Harder and 20 should we need to, if the pedestrian issue becomes such that it's dangerous. But TMI does have a signed contract, it does not include control of Harder and 20, but they are secured for the rest of the entire event, and they provide a lot of staff for the whole event. Security side of things is the Black Line Security, I believe they're out of Sacramento, contracted with the temple last year, they are again this year. They provided a contract to the temple, the temple personnel did not want to sign that one, so they had to split it into two contracts. They have one that is signed to provide security for the temple itself, but no contract has been signed for the bus drop-off pickup zones for any of the parade route, or, yeah, any of the parade route or any of the bus route. So that is still pending. Typically, they have security personnel at various places around the parade route and along the bus route, especially at the drop-off and pickup points where there are large masses of people conglomerating. The permit itself, which gets submitted to the city, the permit that was submitted, I do not know when it was submitted, I do know that it was late in accordance with what we require. It was a permit from several years ago, no part of that permit was really relevant to this year, which is consistent with how they handled it in the past. That permit as it stands is not going to be approved, there wasn't one approved last year either. I, I haven't seen anything new get submitted as far as the updates as these, as this event evolves, when we get closer to it. I don't know that they're going to submit a new one, but no permit has been submitted beyond the original one, it's not going to be approved, and that's where it stands right now, with the actual permit.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from the council here tonight? Vice Mayor?
Sergeant Kraus, thank you. I know this has been, through Chief Runyon, this has been something that you've been diligently working on. And as much as there are a few unanswered questions, I know that there's been a lot of them, and it's due to you and whoever's been helping you, so please accept my thank you for that. I do have a quick question, and I was a little confused, and it's probably me, is, do we have buses running all three days or just two?
No, just one. We have buses that transport people from River Valley High School and all the way up to the temple.
On Sunday?
On Sunday only.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you. That was it. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments from the council?
The mayor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for that presentation, Sergeant. So a couple of years ago, we ran into a problem with folks parking on State Route 20. And I don't believe we had as much of a problem last year, because they were towing folks. What do we have in place for that problem this year?
More of what we did last year. So the first year that we noticed this problem, and it was about two years ago, two or three years ago, we cannot legally tow a vehicle unless it's been posted no parking for an event 48 hours in advance per California state law. So we posted it all over State Route 20 last year, which solved a lot of our problem. So we were able to tow the cars that were illegally parked. We still had a parking problem on 20, it was just further west, but it still interfered with traffic. This year, we are taking no parking signs from Stabler Lane or Walton area all the way out to township. We are lining both sides of the roads with no parking signs to, to the best that we can alleviate that issue, so we have authority to get any vehicles off of those roads.
Thank you.
Once one person parks there, they all, and it becomes quite a problem.
Okay. Questions or comments over here?
I do have a follow-up. As regards the bus company, and I know this has been a back-and-forth issue even between the council and the temple leadership, I am looking forward and respectfully request to understand a little bit more after you have a conversation with Amador Bus Lines about if they're fully understanding. I think it's great that they, they are helping, and kudos to the temple leadership for getting a contract, but your comment concerns me in regards to they may not know exactly what they've gotten themselves into. This is a big deal, especially if, if something happens and, you know, they walk away or who knows what. So I would, I would make that request.
I could provide a little bit of insight. The first time I found out about the bus company was at about 2:00 this afternoon, as far as which company it was. I reached out to them immediately, they were actually quite pleasant to deal with and very understanding. They sent me a copy of the contract, which confirms that they are reserved, 20 buses, 12 and 1/2 hours, and they're prepared to run that entire time. When I explained what this event was, they were a little surprised. I think the initial message that they got from whoever they talked to was that there's going to be some drop-offs and pickups in the morning, some in the afternoon, but kind of be on standby all day. That is not at all what they meant. And I explained that to them, and while they were appreciative that I was providing some good insight, they, they seemed up to the challenge. They'd handled Super Bowl events, they just got done handling an event with half the busload, but it had about 50,000 people. They gave me a little bit of their resume, they seem up to the task. That's 30-minute phone conversations, that's my take on it, but I'll know a lot more on Thursday, when we're going to go over the entire route on a map. I'm going to walk them through the entire route, we're going to talk about any issues with the buses, how they can turn, as long as they can maintain the roads, and I'm going to do everything I can to vet it as, as best as I can. It sounds like they'll be able to run pretty consistently for the, for the 12 and 1/2 hours.
Any other questions or comments from anyone else up here? Okay. Sergeant Kraus, thank you. It's not only for coming tonight, but talking with the chief and everybody, I know how much work you guys have put into this and what you guys have done over the top to get us here. One request that I would have, and, and I know, talking with Chief Runyon, we've talked about it, but if we could get ahead of everything with the press releases, getting out to the public well in advance, as far as no parking on 20, 20, you know, all the different ones that are going to be, from a public safety standpoint, they're going to be impacted to start making sure people are aware that this is coming up, because this thing really kicks off, as we've all discussed in several meetings, on Halloween. That's the Friday night of the event, and that's one of the main things of that neighborhood being locked down and no certain time as far as where it's going to open, because kids have to be off the streets first before we start having cars go through there. So safety has always been paramount in this. Again, thank you, but I was just, want to ask if we can get ahead with some of the public safety press releases, so that we can get that circulating out there, whether to park, not to park, especially Highway 20.
Mailers have been sent out to residents in that part of the area that explains where the closures are, most of that pertains to Sunday. We have an internet team that is putting out a press release, that's not typically my arena, but I believe that that, I provided a lot of information to them, hopefully they get that out if they haven't already. And we've talked significantly to the temple about getting that information out as well. This is their event, after all. They haven't, by their own words, they haven't done the best job getting that out, and they plan to change that this year. You're right, we are 11 days out, I don't know what they put out. But we've provided every piece of information that we can to them as far as the closures, hopefully they can get the message out.
Yeah, and, and that's why I would request that we go ahead and get ahead of it and let everybody know what we can, and not just provide them over to the temple for them to disseminate. If we can go through our channels and they go through their channels, then hopefully we can, you know, everybody will know what, what's supposed to happen that weekend. So, but that would be my only ask. Other than that, it's a huge thank you, because you guys have had a, pardon the French, a hell of a lift through this past year getting us to where we're at. So thank you. So, anything else? All right. Okay. Now we're going to move to public communication. Appearance of interested citizens, and we've got a bunch of cards, and we've already got a written request in. The public's welcome to encourage participate in this public meeting. Public comment is taken on action items when appearing on the consent calendar or business items on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on any other items within the scope of the city's jurisdiction, including items not listed on the agenda, will be addressed at this time. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Members of the public submitting written requests at least 24 hours prior to the meeting will be allotted five minutes to comment. Repetitive comments may be limited and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. I will reiterate a couple of things. Number one, it's not a question-and-answer time, it's public comment. There's a timer that will be running. When it goes off, that's the expiration of your time, and just, please be respectful to everyone else, and just, you know, kind of wrap it up so we can get to the next speaker, because we've got a lot of cards. Okay? So the written request came in tonight from Mr. John Fulmer. There you are, sir. If you'll go up to the podium at the back, that'll be the speaker's podium, you have five minutes, because you turned in a written request yesterday, and please state your name and address for the record.
My name is John Fulmer, and I live off of 850 Lincoln Road. That's on the eastern part of Lincoln Road, which would be matching the sergeant instead of the Sutter County sheriff, I believe, correct? But it's actually similar to what the Presentation One is, except a different area, possibly a different outcome. I made a letter, so, just so I can remember everything, but my name is John Fulmer, and I have lived in Yuba City for many years. I worked, or I work as a safety manager in the safety field for nearly 15 years, focusing on accident prevention, roadway hazards, and community risk reduction. My career has taught me that most tragedies are preventable when we act before, not after, a serious incident. I'm here tonight as both a safety professional and also a father. My wife and I are raising our son, who has autism, and like every parent here, our biggest priority is keeping our family safe, especially in our own neighborhood. I want to bring attention to the most recent accident that happened this last Sunday at 2:00 AM. Around 2:00 AM, this crash was a near miss, coming dangerously close to striking the same home that was hit in 2017. So it was a DUI drunk driver. The area that I'm speaking about is Bunce Road, which is over by Hillcrest, and it comes straight into Lincoln Road, you can either go left or right. So the home and the homes area is just straight in front of it. So there is a stop sign placed there, but basically, when you're under the influence and you're driving down the straight road, you're just going to go straight through. So back in 2017, November 15th, there was a DUI driver that crashed into a duplex on 850 Lincoln Road. At 2:15 in the morning, the vehicle tore through the kitchen, pushed the washer and dryer into the bathroom, and barely missed the three sleeping children. They survived only with minor injuries, but the family was displaced, and it could have ended far worse. Now, nearly eight years later, we're seeing the same dangerous conditions, still putting residents at, at risk. As someone who studies these patterns, I can tell you, when similar crashes keep happening at the same location, it's not a coincidence, it's the design and safety issue that needs immediate attention. Over the past few years, I've submitted multiple requests through YC 311 portal for traffic calming measures on Lincoln Road. Unfortunately, the speeding and the amount of traffic really hasn't changed. The area continues to see high-speed traffic and recently, an increase of semi-trucks using Lincoln Road as a cut-through. This is concerning, because Lincoln Road is lined with multi-dwelling apartments and family housing. The constant truck traffic is not, does not only bring excessive noise, but it creates safety hazards for children, pedestrians, and residents entering and exiting the driveways. I don't know if you guys are, if you've ever heard a semi-truck with flat tires or blown tires, or even an empty trailer, you can usually hear them probably all the way down from the 7-Eleven as they just enter and go towards Garden Highway, because there's some truck parking yards over there. So it's very loud, and it's 300 to 400 trucks, I think, a day that, that pass. So, it's very loud and it's 300 to 400 trucks, I think, a day that pass, just go back and forth. So, basically, I want to draw attention. I did make some printouts. I wasn't able to do a presentation here. I didn't know that, I didn't know if that was possible to do that, but I did print out some pictures of another address, which is 556 Anna Drive, which is close to the first presentation you guys were talking about. There was multiple vehicles that went through the home. So, basically, I believe the city put all sorts of things there and poles and to where if someone did it again, they wouldn't go through the house. So, basically, ever since that was up, I don't think there's been another car that's went through that home. So, basically, I'm urging the council to consider adding flashing warning signs, enhanced reflective signage, and crash posts in the front of 850 Lincoln Road around Apartment 50, but it's the homes that are right there in front of Bunce Road. So, I'm looking for the same protection because usually when me and my wife are sleeping, I'm kind of wondering, especially if it's a Friday night or a Saturday, if I'm going to wake up the next day because of the stuff that they're doing. So, was that my time?
Okay. That was. If you can wrap up in another minute or so, we'll be good.
Basically, I'm just, you know, because there's been a car going through the home back in 2017, and the full report hasn't come out, but the recent one was a DUI, and fortunately he made a slight right turn and kind of veered away from the houses, but it's, the statistics are there. And so, instead of a roundabout and all this excessive money and these traffic things, I'm mainly looking for the poles to be put up there and some kind of signage. And then, also, the speeding on the road is just crazy. And this is Yuba City Police. They've told me that they usually send the radar officers out to areas where there's more fatalities, and there's really not a lot of fatalities on Lincoln Roads. Maybe that's why they're not there, but, you know, it doesn't make sense.
Okay. Thank you for being here tonight. As you already heard, we're all definitely concerned about, you know, the safety of everyone. I'd like to introduce you. If you have not already met Mr. Wolf, that's the person you're going to need to talk to and, and kind of see what we can do in your area, like we're going to hear from everybody else on the Sanborn here in a few moments, but that's where it needs to start. So, if you could make sure you guys have each other's information tonight, that would be great.
All right, sounds good. Thank you guys for your time.
All right. We have several speaker cards. So, the first one is Richard Dixon. And as everyone comes up, you'll have three minutes. You guys heard the beeper and please state your name and address for the record as you start, and then you got three minutes, sir.
Yeah, appreciate you guys letting me speak tonight. My name's Richard Dixon. I live over off Blevin Road, right down the street, and I'm here tonight to express my grievances with the operation and management of your code enforcement department. As a Yuba City resident of over 20 years, I'm appalled by the actions and targeted harassment by my household has endured through the actions of the code enforcement employees. Code enforcement's original purpose was to ensure public safety, but it has now morphed into a tool used by disgruntled neighbors to harass others anonymously. My home has been repeatedly harassed by this anonymous person who is using code enforcement as a tool for their vendetta. I have received multiple code enforcement complaints, to which all have been baseless or egregiously petty by any sense of logic. One of the complaints was issued was for a chair on my front porch that my 76-year-old mother with terminal health issues and a 10-year public servant of the Department of Corrections uses to get her outside time. Also living in my home is my wife, who is currently battling cancer, and her mom, who is an 82-year-old widow of a retired Air Force service member of 20 years, and also has health issues of her own. This harassment has brought irreparable and unnecessary mental harm to myself and my family members, who are all just trying to survive the everyday life. Another baseless complaint that was submitted was my doorway wasn't wide enough to accommodate medical personnel. This is completely false because just a few months ago, my mother was taken to the hospital with that exact medical personnel. So, they're literally writing violations that are completely baseless. Not to mention, my doorway is a double wide door, so it's twice as wide as any other standard residential door. So, to say that it's not wide enough is completely false. In addition to this, I am now being told that I cannot even park my vehicles in my own driveway. Yes, that's right. I cannot park my vehicles in my own driveway. They are now determining that my vehicles are a nuisance to the public. In what reality is this logical, fair, or constitutional? Not only has this anonymous person used code enforcement as a tool, but they have also called the Yuba City Police Department to complain about the vehicles for the very same reason. A police officer showed up to my home and determined that the complaint was baseless and left without any citation being issued. Yet, I am still receiving these complaints from the code enforcement. I am a law-abiding taxpayer, but currently what is taking place is a complete infringement on my rights of freedom, prosperity, and especially peace. I am officially calling for Yuba City Council to mitigate this issue internally and avoid any possible lawsuits that I may file if it's not corrected in a timely manner. I am asking that the code enforcement department's ethical practices be fully investigated, that Austin Piven, the code enforcement officer responsible, be terminated from employment, and that his boss, Doug Libby, be formally disciplined for allowing this to happen on his watch. I will wrap it up. I have a little bit more to say, but I think you guys get the gist. So, I'm asking you, city council members, are you going to allow this egregious behavior to continue? I hope that you will do the right thing and look into this matter. Thank you for your time and consideration.
All right, thank you. Mr. Bendorff? Ken, I was, I was going to ask Mr. Libby, but in light of the last comments, is this something that I can put on your radar or do we just figure out what's really going on? I would appreciate it. Thank you. Okay. Next up is Ken Bates.
Good evening, thank you. My name's Ken Bates. I live at 728 Sanborn Road. My house is on the corner of Sanborn and McCune Road, where the roundabout has been placed. When the signs went up for the roundabout, I came down to the city and spoke to Josh Wolf, Public Works Director. He said a petition had been circulated and the neighbors had agreed that the roundabout was the best traffic calming solution for the speeding problem. I told Josh I had never talked to anyone or had ever seen a petition or heard about any public announcement. He said it had been signed by all the neighbors in the area. He said, he told me that the roundabout was going, was going to go in and that it would be evaluated for effectiveness. He did not give me any length of time for that review process. Soon after the roadway was striped and the delineators and sand barrels were installed, that day neighbors started complaining to me because my house is on the corner, neighbors always come walking by. When they said to me they had never seen a petition or, we decided to start our own petition. Mr. Chima, my neighbor from up the street, and I went around and talked to the nearby homeowners and gathered signatures. Many were from residents on both sides of Sanborn Road, where we live. We gathered nearly 100 signatures going on our street and the other streets. All of the neighbors, I agree, we want to have the traffic slowed down on our street. Roundabouts seem to work in locations that have enough room and size to support the proper lane sizing. I have two examples, and I gave you folks those packets that are in there. So, in those, there's a packet of Google Earth picture that shows the one on Sanborn Road. That intersection is 180 feet across. There's another Google Earth picture in there that shows Percy Road. That one's 150 feet across. And the one that we have there for us on Sanborn Road, ours is about 45 by 60, so we're quite a bit smaller. Then I have some other pictures in there. Those are referring to images looking down Sanborn Road. Placing the roundabout at the intersection has caused other traffic problems because the small size of the road around was, it was not able to be placed in the center of the roadway. In an attempt to make the roundabout work, the city painted the curbs on the west side of my house, on the west side of my house. I do not have any street parking on that side of my house, and on the south side of my house, I have delineators and a new crosswalk, so I've lost over half of the frontages on that side of my house. Again, I have lost street parking. My neighbor crossed from me, Axel Shoki's house is across from me. At the roundabout, his driveway comes straight out to the roundabout. He can, if he wants to go north on Sanborn Road, he must cross traffic coming from the south. He can only go to the south out of his driveway. If he goes in the roundabout, he can't go straight across to hit on, go eastbound on McCune Avenue. The drive lanes are so small, the drivers are usually, are, the drivers are unsure how and when to navigate the roundabout intersection. The turns are so tight that many of the delineators have been hit and ran over. After the initial setup by the city, the initial setup, the city came back and opened up the lanes. That changed, that change helped some of the westbound traffic coming off of McCune Avenue. After the delineators removed the southbound traffic, am I done?
Yes, sir, that's your time. Can you wrap it up and summarize it if you could?
Yes, just that I think there's other things that we can do in there, and I'd sure like a voice that trying to, you know, decide what we can do to make it better. We all want the traffic to slow down. We definitely do. But I don't think that's the right way, and I can't even park in front of my own house. And I can't get my trailer out through that either.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much. I hope something comes of this.
Thank you. Next speaker is Linda Stresser.
Good evening. I'm Linda Stresser. I've lived on, I live at 611 Sanborn. I've lived there for 20 years. Prior to that, I've lived on Sanborn for 13 years south. So, 33 years on Sanborn. There's just three things I'd like to point out. One, the roundabout hasn't stopped the cars coming by too fast. They're still gunning it past my house. I live closer to Cherry. Second, I've noticed, and people in my family have noticed, cars going the wrong way. They, it's completely a mess. They cut it off and go the wrong way, and it is too small, too. It's quite narrow. That's all. Thank you.
All righty, thank you. Next speaker is Axel in his Carl's hub.
That's a hard one, isn't it?
Yep.
My name is Axel Carl, sorry, 725 Sanborn. I'm raised in Europe, so I'm a little familiar with roundabouts. That roundabout you guys have put up there is not big enough, and the wild guys are still blowing right through it at the same speed they always were. So, I am for stop signs and speed bumps, if that can help, and I think that would be a heck of a lot better than what we see there today. Thank you.
All righty, thank you. Next speaker is Zach Repka.
Hi, good evening. Zach Repka, 924 Sanborn Road. So, I live south of the roundabout and just north of Lincoln Road. I want to say I appreciate the attention to the traffic mitigation efforts on Sanborn. It's been a long time that we've been hopeful for some activity in that regard. I, I'm a big fan of the pinch points and ideas that staff presented, meandering mediums also. I really like the idea of flashing signs like they have on Stabler. We probably don't have a huge pedestrian issue in the area of the roundabout. There is more of a choke point in front of my house and some of the older houses just north of Lincoln Road, where there's not sidewalks. We probably have more pedestrians, you know, by my rough estimate, than Stabler Lane might. So, yeah, we have a lot of pedestrians walking, and certainly pedestrian safety is a concern. So, thank you. Appreciate your time.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to make any comments other, under public comments on things that aren't on the agenda? If you do, go to the podium. You'll have three minutes. State your name and your address for the record, and you can get queued up. Mr. Curlin, you can be first, and if you want to speak, just go on to the, the back there and we'll go from there.
Tony Curlin, 636 Anna Drive, Yuba City. A couple of issues of which you've heard about. Number one, we are controlled, traffic controlled by the sheriff. We are lucky to see one sheriff's car every couple of days going through our neighborhood. My wife walks down Sanborn every morning, and when she gets to McCune, it's a crapshoot whether somebody's going to just blow right through that roundabout or she can actually cross the street. So, that, that's one. Number two, there are a number of people who are going south on Sanborn and get to the roundabout, and they slow down to do it. There's a car behind them, which will pass them and go the wrong way through the roundabout. So, people aren't stopping. It's terrible. So, we have a problem with traffic on Anna Drive, speeding 50, 60, 70 miles an hour. Same thing on Sanborn. And that house at Anna and Cherry, some construction was started there probably a couple of months ago to make some improvements, and after some concrete was laid into a ditch or whatever, we've seen nothing happening there. So, maybe somebody somewhere can, you know, say, okay, that's been contracted out. We can do something about it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right. Up to the podium, and again, state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Ed Leon. I'm at 855 Sanborn Road. One thing I want to make a comment is, as far as the initial meeting, I never received an invite. I talked to some other neighbors, didn't know anything about the meeting. I'm curious to know how many residents attended to this meeting. One observation, as far as the speed issue, driving south, I see cars, you know, still speeding up. The roundabout is offset, that speeders can clearly see this gap, and they can just make it through. At this point, this roundabout defeats the purpose. I advise on doing a stop signs. I think they're effective. I oppose to speed bumps. It reminds me of some other places, and I think we can do better than that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to make comments tonight? There we go. Step up, state your name and address for the record.
Mike Smith, 1979 Elmer Road. Comment I have is about the Sikh parade because we live, live on Elmer, and the only comment I have is if, if they don't have a permit, how do they end up having their, and that's a question, and I know that it's just frustrating to me if they don't have it, how can they operate? I know they're going to have it anyway.
Thank you. Anybody else like to make any comments under public comment? Anyone else? Want to make sure everybody's heard tonight, except for Mr. Cardoza. He can sit down. Chair hasn't acknowledged you.
Manny Cardoza, Yuba City. This is concerning the concert that we had down at the Hooligans and the place across the street this last weekend. I was there a week ago or two weeks ago, and they were talking how great it was going to be, and they were going to have crossing guards to help people get back and forth across the street there at Plumas and Scott. And when they had their fun, their event last Saturday night, the police department wasn't aware of it because I asked them, they put a cone in the middle of the intersection, at the middle of the sidewalk at Scott and Plumas, and put a stop sign on each side of the stop, each side of the crosswalk, and they were using that for crosswalks, though people were, actually, they did stop at Scott and Plumas, but then two car lanes up to the north, you had your stop signs at the intersection that we use as center. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that they're trying to do things and they're not really notifying the police department or the City of Yuba City Public Works Department. Just wanted you to be aware of it. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Cardoza. I think that's something that we can I think that's something that we can take to our next DBA meeting because, just because everything's nice down there, they, they can't go rogue. They've got to work with PD and doing, and traffic. So anybody else? Anybody else have any further public comments? Because we want to make sure everybody's heard. Last call. All right. We're going to close Agenda Item 3. I want to thank everybody that showed up tonight and had comments. We've addressed the ones and pointed into the right direction for the ones we have. And I know Mr. Wolf has been taking all the comments under advisement as he proceeds forward with that, as well as Sergeant Kraus on the SEEK Festival. So thank you all for that. All right. We're going to move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time that the council votes on the motion unless members of this council request specific items be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual actions. Do we have any public comment on Consent Calendar Items 4 through 9? Any public comment in Consent Calendar's Item 4 through 9? Any comment in Consent Calendar? Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the council for discussion and/or action.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Would you like to make a motion to take action on Item 4 through 9 on the consent calendar? Second?
I have a motion, and I have a second. All those in favor of approving the consent calendar, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Consent calendar is approved. Moving on to now business items. Item 10, which is the 2526 Office of Traffic Safety Traffic Enforcement Grant. And Sergeant Kraus, you have the floor, sir.
Once again, thank you for the time. It dawned on me, I didn't really introduce myself last time. I think most of you know who I am, but I'm Sergeant Kraus with the Traffic Enforcement and Education Unit with the Yuba City Police Department. And I have the privilege today to bring to you the 2526 Selective Traffic Enforcement Program, or the STEP Grant. The Selective Traffic Enforcement Program is offered by California Office of Traffic Safety, OTS. It enables law enforcement agencies to field police officers on an overtime status to target certain driving behaviors with directed enforcement efforts that make the roadway safer for the community. It specifically provides funding to pay officers overtime to do directed traffic enforcement that is specific to making our roadway safer. And those directed enforcement efforts are, I'll, I'll get into the specifics of them, but it'll be DUI enforcement, or speeding enforcement, or general traffic enforcement, or distracted driving, any number of specific issues, so we can focus specifically on those issues on an overtime basis. So in August of 2025, OTS did award our department the STEP Grant in the amount of $100,000 for the fiscal year of 2526. We applied for this grant prior to that, at the end of last year's, and they did approve it. No matching funds are required for the city. The grant time is from October 1st, and it runs through September 30th of, of next year. The STEP Grant will fund DUI checkpoints, DUI saturation patrols. Checkpoints are the big ones that you see. The big focus of those is to get word out into the community, show a presence in the community, and it, it's more about the presence in the community than it actually is in catching DUI drivers. But last year, I think we pulled eight out of those, those checkpoints, which is a little bit high for us. DUI saturation patrols is just what it sounds like. It's, it's guys going out, we call them crash cars, but we don't mean it in the term of crash. It's just, we go out into the community and focus specifically on making as many stops as possible to try to do DUI enforcement. Those have been very effective for us as well. In fact, of 180 agencies in Northern California of similar size and demographics, this is according to Office of Traffic Safety, we are the number one DUI enforcement agency in Northern California. Collaborative DUI enforcement, and this goes to speak to the, the Sanborn issue, this would actually fund us to help Sutter County and their jurisdiction do some traffic enforcement. This is for, specifically for DUI, but it enables us to bring outside agencies in and fund them, and it enables us to do some enforcement at OTS's expense and immediately neighboring agencies as well. Might give us the opportunity to work on Sanborn a bit. General traffic enforcement, those are my favorite, where we just get to go out and make, and make as many stops and impact certain areas as much as possible. Distracted driving, one of the leading causes of collisions in the state of California as a whole. That detail is specific to distracted driving, any electronic communication device that impedes somebody's ability to operate a motor vehicle. Pedestrian and bicycle safety operations, about 70% of the fatalities that we experience in Yuba City involve pedestrians and bicycles. It's a big problem. Motorcycle safety enforcement, street racing and sideshow enforcement operations, that has been extremely effective for us. We've seen a dramatic decrease in the amount of street racing and sideshow events that we've had. They still exist, but they're at a much reduced rate. We used to have them taking over Kohl's and Game Mart parking lot all the time, and we don't see nearly as much, and a lot of it is because of the training that OTS has provided, where we send officers to specific schools and these enforcement operations. We actually saturate the streets with five or six doubled patrol units to focus specifically on street racing stuff, all the cars with the cutoff mufflers that are obnoxious. Collaborative, collaborative traffic enforcement, that's what I was saying before with neighboring agencies. It includes funding for travel expenses for training, training courses and classes. It funds the officers' actual travel expenses to get there. Checkpoint supplies, those are things like cones, our DUI trailer, a, a number of other supplies that we use to actually affect those DUI checkpoints, and in-vehicle radar devices, which are quite expensive. They're about $12,000 to $15,000 a pop, and it'll fund two of those for our patrol cars. This is my recommendation. The City of Yuba City and the Yuba City Police Department has a longstanding history of working with OTS in an effort to make the roadway safer for our community. Yuba City Police Department's recommendation is to accept the grant and immediately begin deploying officers in an effort, in an effort to deter unsafe driving behaviors that threaten our community members. Again, no matching funds are required from the city. All of it that is spent on OTS is reimbursed. Alternatives is not to accept the grant, and we can look for other alternatives, but... Questions?
All right. Before we open the, the public hearing, I personally have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Because you, you went back to the, the slide where you talked about if there's a injury or fatality, it's usually pedestrians or bicycles.
Approximately 70% involve a pedestrian or bicycles, yes.
The, the question concerns the bicycles, because I think we've got an education problem here. Do bicycles have to follow the traffic laws of the city, just like motor, motor vehicles do?
Yes.
Because I see the guys day in and day out that think they're on the Tour de France. You probably know the guys I'm talking about. And they blow through intersections, blow through everything, and is, you know, that could be a part of it. So I don't know if we have any avenues to educate. So I, I wanted to know that for myself, because I wasn't sure if they had different laws or not.
They do not. Well, they have some different laws because they're not a motor vehicle, but they are considered vehicles, and they have to obey the rules of the road. The biggie being driving on the right side of the road, stopping at stop signs, using the, the, the traffic lights in accordance with other traffic as well. Left side of the road is a big one that we see a problem with. Bicycles, scooters, which is another big problem, they, scooters travel in excess of 25 miles an hour now. And if they're driving, riding on the left side of the road, if you can imagine a car coming to an inner, or a driveway, picture Gray Avenue, and you're going to get onto a driveway and turn right, the car coming up to Gray Avenue is going to look to the left for southbound, or whatever direction traffic that they're going to turn into. They're not looking to the right, where a 25 mile an hour scooter's coming, and they start to pull out on the road when they have a clearing, and they hit the scooter, or the scooter hits the side of their car. At 25 miles an hour, that very well could be a fatal, and we've seen that. So those are the reasons why bicycles or any vehicle that can propel a human being much faster than an average person walks is supposed to be on the right side of the road with traffic, so they can anticipate those movements.
Thank you. Thank you for that explanation and answering that. So is any other comments or questions up here before we go to the public hearing?
Public hearing?
What?
I'll say, oh, wait.
Oh, okay. All right. The public hearing for the 2526 Office of Traffic Safety Traffic Enforcement Grant is now open. If there are any members of the public who would like to address the council on this issue, please provide your statement via public comment and state your name and address for the record. Do we have any public comments on this item? Any public comments on this item? Any public comments on this item? Okay. Hearing none. I am closing the public hearing and bringing this ba, a matter back to the council for consideration and action.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
I noticed that it's pedestrian bicycle. Something that came up last year was the enforcement of windows, tinted windows that you can't see the driver. Being a motorcycle driver, I rely on that eye-to-eye contact when I'm on any surface street or highway, and I see time after time after time in this community to where that's just okay. And I think that's something that we need to start taking a little bit more action on in, in our policing. And I think it would leave the bicycle situation as well as pedestrian. If you can't see somebody driving, you don't know if they're looking the right way, the wrong way. It's terrifying, trust me, as a motorcyclist. It's, it's something that needs to be addressed, and I think we need to start hammering this on the streets of Yuba City.
Okay. Any more comments or action? That's where we're at with the council. So looking for action on Agenda Item 10.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the chief of police to accept $100,000 grant funding from the 2025-2026 Selective Traffic Enforcement Program and approve expenditure recommendations. Also to authorize a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $100,000 to account number 100-43418, also 2165-61430, and 2165-62801, and lastly, 2165-63801.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion, and I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you, Sergeant. Okay. Moving to Agenda Item 11, Rezone 24-05, Plan Development 20, Elmer West Subdivision, TSM 2405, located on the west side of Elmer Avenue, APN 17065008. Jess Preet, you have the floor, ma'am.
Hi. Good evening. So my name's Jess Preet, and I'm a planner with the Development Services Department, and tonight I will be presenting Elmer West. So the purpose tonight is to rezone 10.13 acres, removing an X20 overlay district and establishing, establishing a planned development for the Elmer West subdivision, which was contingently approved by Planning Commission at its regular meeting on September 24th. So the project site is located on the west side of Elmer Avenue, and it is actually outside of city limits, but it is within the city's adopted sphere of influence. And the bordering uses, they are all single-family homes. We also recently annexed in this parcel right here, and this is known as Biara Estates for 33 new single-family homes. So the project proposal is going to rezone this site, and so the current pre-annexation zoning is a single-family residential with the X20 overlay district, and the proposed zoning will be a planned development 20. So again, this is currently in Sutter County, and so the applicant, if it does get approved through tonight, as well as our next city council meeting to adopt the ordinance of the rezone, they will apply to annex into the city. And the map shown on the screen here is that it is also currently zoned for residential. So, you know, over the last 20-plus years, we are expecting this area to develop into additional residential homes. So the X20 overlay district, so this was adopted in 2004 to implement pre-annexation zonings, which is consistent with the general plan. However, new policies and programs have been adopted subsequent to the X20 combining district, which makes the requirements duplicative. So the planned development 20, so what the applicant is proposing is to have some standards that are slightly different than what is in our current municipal code. So the general plan designation, it will remain with the medium, or with the minimum density of two to eight units per acre. And then they have proposed on here a minimum lot size of 4,000 square feet. However, the map that is being proposed, we do have, the smallest lot size is actually 5,800 square feet, and then the corner lots is going to be 7,000 square feet. So again, on here, you'll see there's just slight differences. One of them is going to be lot coverage as well. So in our current standards, we have 40% lot coverage for two-story residences and 45% for single-story residences. So here, they are proposing to up that slightly to 45% for two-story and 55% for a single-story. So the subdivision map that was approved contingently by Planning Commission is for 55 new single-family residential lots, and that results in a density of 5.43 dwelling units per acre, as shown on the screen here. And so even though tonight we are considering the rezone, I want to give you some background on what the map is, the map that was approved, and what we are hoping to establish here at this parcel. So again, the project is bordered by single-family residences on all sides. And, and so we also do have a condition of approval, which was added to minimize conflict, conflicts with adjacent single-story homes. And so here, highlighted in the yellow squares, what we have added into the conditions of approval is that these lots, they must either be a single story, or the back-facing windows on the upper floor must be at least six feet above the floor. So this is to be respectful of the existing homes that are there, but still allowing for future development. And so we did have a traffic study prepared for this project, and the traffic study was completed on a Wednesday in January for a period of 24 hours. So the traffic study says that the project will generate approximately 519 daily trips, and then the daily trips will close to double with the existing traffic conditions. However, Elmer Avenue will continue to be a low-volume roadway. So at our Planning Commission meeting, there were quite, some really good comments from the residences regarding the traffic, the impact that this could have. So I wanted to just address that even though with the 55 new single-family homes being proposed, the traffic is actually still in line with what we have required in our general plan. So here, the traffic study concludes that the existing conditions plus Elmer West, it'll operate consistent with the 2040 general plan and strive to maintain a target level service of D. And so this, again, it's actually going to change, this is the AM peak hour with what's currently existing is a level of service C, and with Elmer West, it'll remain at a level of service C. And you'll see that the peak hours, so PM peak hours, will change from a level of service C to a level of service D, and that's at Butte House and Elmer Avenue. I do have Josh here. He can help answer more of those questions, but really, it's still staying within what is required in our general plan to be at a level of service D or better. The traffic study did have recommendations that will be incorporated into the subdivision. So I have all four listed up on the screen. So the project will be required to pay the traffic development impact fees, and it will be required for a half-street widening of Elmer Avenue along the project frontage. And then we do have a condition of approval, which requires the widening of Elmer Avenue to be 20 feet between the project and then south to Butte House Road. Curve extensions are proposed along Elmer Avenue and Amisha Leap to, Amisha Loop to narrow the roadway. And these are actually some of the things that we actually saw in Presentation 1 tonight. And I do have a picture that I can show you of what we're talking about. And then, as well as a rectangular rapid flashing beacon. So here on the screen, in the blue is where there will be full frontage improvement. So that will include the sidewalk, rolled curb and gutter, as well as a parking lane and a bike lane. And highlighted in the yellow is where they will go ahead and widen it to the 20 feet, and it's still currently in the right-of-way, so no additional right-of-way will be required. So here, what you see, uh-oh, just kidding. So here, what you see, oh, just kidding, one back. So here on the screen, I do, we're showing where it does loop out. So again, these are going to be for traffic calming measures, and we have the flashing beacon. So again, for the crosswalk. And then an environmental was completed, and so after completing the environmental, there was no evidence in the record that the proposed project will have a significant effect on the environment. And then we do recommend adoption of the mitigated negative declaration for this project. And we are required to make the rezone findings. These were included in my staff report in the ordinance, but I'm happy to go into it in detail if needed, as well as the planned development findings, as shown on the screen. So my recommendation tonight is to conduct a public hearing and then introduce an ordinance of the city council of the city of Yuba City approving environmental assessments by adopting a mitigated negative declaration. Prepare for the rezone, planned development, and the tentative subdivision map to rezone the assessors parcel from R1X20 to PD20 located on the west side of Elmer Avenue, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there any questions from the council before we go to the public hearing? All right. With that...
Through the mayor. So sorry, if I may, just a brief reminder, as you open the public hearing for the public, the items before the city council tonight are not the tentative map or the number of lots there. That has already been addressed by the Planning Commission. What's before the city council tonight is the environmental assessment, the zoning, and the plan development. So there, just keep in mind, it's two different things. So the number of houses there, the number of lots, whether or not the track map is correct, the conditions for the track map, that's technically not before the city council tonight, so they can't take action on it. Thank you.
All right. Back to where we were. The public hearing for Rezone 24-05 and Planned Development 20, Elmer West subdivision, TSM 24-05, located on the west side of Elmer Avenue, APN 17065008, is now open. If there are any members of the public that would like to address the council on this issue, please provide your statement via public comment. State your name and address for the record. I do already have a couple of cards, so Mr. Smith, you have the floor. You have three minutes. This is Mike. Oh, yeah, the one behind us, Mr. Smith as well. Mike, you're up first. If you'll state your name and address for the record, you have three minutes.
Mike Smith, 1979 Elmer Avenue. We went and stated at the Planning Commission some concerns that we had, and they said we could address how many units was involved in this situation at this meeting, and now we're being told we can't. That was frustrating, that was, because they're raising the amount of houses they can put in there. The other things that I had addressed at the Planning Commission was the traffic, getting on Elmer, going over to Cross, the other thing. And it is, it's unsafe now, and with those 55 homes that are going in there, there's gonna, it'll double the traffic that's going through Elmer Avenue. It is not, that road is not meant to take care of all that traffic. There's no sidewalks, there's no place for bicycles, there's no place for pedestrians. There's lots of people in that neighborhood that walk their kids down that road right now, that they don't have sidewalks, so they're out having a good time with their kids, and that will not continue. It's a good community, and it's a good county area, and it's just frustrating to me that I believe in growing, but we need to grow in a certain way.
Through the mayor. I'm so sorry, if I can make a clarification, you are allowed to talk about the number of houses there. You can't, what's not before the city council is the track map, the configuration, how it's set up, it's organized. So mayor, if you wanted to give Mr. Smith another 30 seconds to address that, you certainly...
If he'd like to address that, Mike.
I wouldn't want to limit anybody's public speech on items that they can talk about.
Basically, now, it's zoned to half an acre per house, or one acre, pardon me, because that's the way we all bought our homes. So we had places for livestock, places for, but the city's coming through, and that will be taken away from the people that live out there at the moment, because once it gets in the city, you can't have the animals and the other stuff that you're used to having out there. And I have a hard time. I know that the city needs to grow. I really do. That is agriculture, a little farming community where you can raise your kids with cows and chickens and whatever you want to. When that comes through, all of that will be gone.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Jason?
You have the floor, sir.
Hi, my name's Jason Smith. I live at 2033 Elmer Avenue. I have a few points tonight. I believe you spoke at the Planning Commission meeting and went over the project there as well. So this is the second time you've gone over this presentation and said that the current X-20 designation is covered by other items that are now laws or zones or whatever. You have also, this is the second time that you have left out that that zone designation is for one acre per one home. You also stated that the traffic survey was done on a Wednesday in January. Was that done during Christmas break? Because the last traffic study that was done for the Tiara Estates was done during COVID. Earlier in the meeting, during the Sanborn presentation, you guys talked about the Sutter County Sheriff's Department not having enough people to keep the residents safe in that area. We are currently covered by Sutter County Sheriff's Department. How do you plan on keeping us safe with the added housing and traffic? Earlier, during the Sanborn discussion, the vice mayor said that you should not make changes that will affect the current residents negatively. Mayor Shaw also reiterated this. This new neighborhood will do exactly that to our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
I agree with the X-20 overlay. It's, it would be fine if they developed that property at one house per acre. And right, if they put it in the city limits and they make that part covered by the Yuba City Police, we already have a problem on Elmer with, you call the police and/or the sheriff's department, they argue about who has to respond to that. And now, if we have more hopscotching, what is in city limits and what isn't, it's really going to be confusing, because now, the, just the front part of Elmer is Yuba City Police, and the rest of it is Sheriff's Department. But, so if you confuse that, and there's a little bit of stuff in the city limits that's going to be protected by YCPD, there'll be confusions. And my other part is the safety of all of those houses. Well, the traffic study did not include any of the houses that have just been built on Butte House Road, and they empty onto Butte House Road. When those houses are filled, and the 55 houses that they approved, or the 33 houses that they approved on Elmer already, is not in that traffic study. How bad is it going to be when you have those 33 houses and then you add 55 more to it? And then the other houses that have been previously built that are empty right now on Butte House Road, it's gonna make, it's just gonna be a nightmare. It's gonna, it's just gonna be traffic everywhere, and you're not gonna be able to get out onto Butte House. And as far as I'm concerned, that is irresponsible of the city to allow that to happen. It's like you stop the problems before they happen, instead of trying to figure out how to fix them once they've already happened. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rick Baloo, 2290 Elmer Avenue, 45 years there. That traffic study is nonsense. Approving 55 homes on the east side, 34 on the west side, that's almost 100 homes. That's at least 200 more drivers. The traffic is already unsafe. I put a sign under my bell box, please slow down 35 miles an hour, because they're going 70 to 100 miles an hour down that street. It's not wide enough. It's not gonna be safe. Putting 55 and 34 homes where houses are acre each, just is poor planning and ridiculous to me. That's just my thought.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Linda Essex. I'm at 2051 Elmer Avenue, and I'm getting all the new houses. The one, the first set of new houses are right next to me, and the other ones are right across the street. I have chickens. I won't even have, will I even be able to keep them? If you get all these people in here, we don't have any place to drive, and it's horrible trying to get out onto Butte House, just normally. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any more comments from the public? All right.
John McKenzie, we're 2116 Unit B, Elmer. We're to the north of the development. I reserve the right to be wrong here, but I felt like the presentation might have been contradictory. It said something about only single-family homes along the borders that border the homes that are existing there, but then it mentioned something about if you did elect to have a second story, it just couldn't have a window? And I was just seeing if there's clarification there, because I thought that had said no second-story homes in the yellow. Am I incorrect there?
We'll go to that in just a minute. Do you have any other comments before we go address that?
What I actually did come here to talk about, it's just like water mitigation that I'm kind of concerned about. Most people have, obviously, there's no drains because of the county, everybody just has a septic system. I'm sure most people's homes probably do go towards that empty lot, just because of like the natural curve. So I just thought, once they build there, there might be big issues of flooding coming back towards people's homes that have no drains. And I hope there was some kind of building mitigation pulled into that for the backyards with drainage. I just don't have all the plans, but I just wanted to raise that concern.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments from the public in the public hearing?
Yeah, my name's Mike Johnson. I live on Long's Lane, which borders the south, and been there since '62, off and on. So we, I'm just curious about how you're gonna border, whether it's a wall or you leave up our fences, because there's wood fences that are falling down, there's metal fences, so whether that's a question for now. But yeah, regarding the traffic, I came here tonight during the evening with a lot, since it's nighttime, very hard to get on there. And the morning is a little easier, because traffic's backed up from the stoplight at Sierra Central all the way to Mr. Paul's Market, and usually, people let us in. You know, they're pretty nice about it. But tonight was a little bit risky. Plus, that telephone pole with that big vines growing all over, we gotta get out there in the traffic a little bit, and I don't know if you know what I'm talking about, but you pull up to Butte House, telephone pole, and that house right there has an immense amount of brush around it, and sometimes the traffic coming down Butte House is probably faster than 35. And so it gets a little risky. I've been, you know, harassed trying to pull out, but sometimes you've got to take a chance and get out there. So how you mitigate that whole intersection, again, that new division on the south side of Butte House, and plus these 55 or 30, plus 35 houses, I think there's gonna be a little bit of an issue getting out onto Butte House. So how you mitigate that? Sometimes I go all the way to Peas, and go down Peas all the way to Live Oak Boulevard, and that helps a little bit. So I don't know how you're gonna mitigate that traffic, but it's gonna be a challenge. And I don't know if this is time for questions, but the intersection at Sierra Central, is that gonna continue on through north?
Yeah.
Pardon?
Please do not direct questions to people in the audience, okay?
I was looking at you.
Well, this is a public hearing, but we'll try to address some of these shortly, so we're not gonna have an answer just yet for you, okay?
Good enough, that's it.
Okay. Is any other public comments tonight, under the public hearing? No, actually, stay tight, go ahead. Sean, you're up, because you've already spoken once, so...
Hello, my name is Shaw Menard with MHM Engineering. I represent the owner of the property, Interwest Homes. And we had, it was a lot of comments during the Planning Commission, we answered a lot of those. Traffic was a big item. There was a traffic study, and so I'm sensitive to that. We talked about the site distance issue when you turn out onto Butte House Road. We understand. I think Josh was looking into that to address that tree in the pole location, located out there. It's a little tricky, it's in Sutter County, so it's kind of your other issue that you talked about earlier today. And it does, it does increase the delay there, three seconds. So we're not, but it does stay within the policies of the city. Drainage, either the one person asked about drainage, this project will have drainage. It ties into the system that was built in Blevins Road years ago. It'll run down, Blevins down to the Live Oak Canal eventually. So this whole entire property will be collected in an underground pipe system, so it won't be draining onto adjacent properties. All the water will be collected in a underground piping system. I went to some of the other questions that came up. The traffic report was indeed taken during January, and it was indeed during, while school was in session. So that was, that was one of the key components of the traffic study, had to be done that way. I can't speak for Tiara Estates, I wasn't involved in that, but during COVID, it was hard to take, you had to do some things, and they factored schools into it, but that wasn't, that's not here tonight. The two-story, our client understands that along the perimeter, there's a lot of singles, existing single-story houses, so on those blocks that are in yellow, that they do understand there's a restriction to either single-story or that hybrid two-story where you have no window, or the, I call them the six-foot window pucks up above is a criteria, and they're well aware of that moving, going forward in this project. The zoning, before our client purchased this property, we looked at the zoning, that's obviously, our client's a residential home builder, and it's zoned R1 in the general plan, and so in order to, before annexing into the city, we had to go through the procedure to do the rezone to comply with the city general plan. So that's what we're doing here with this project. Otherwise, we would not have a rezone. But the current zoning is R1, which is two units to eight units per acre. We come in at right in the middle, about 5.4. If you go look at the projects that have been before you or before the Planning Commission, this project actually is probably on the larger size, they're 55 by 100, almost 108 feet is the average lot size. If you go look at the projects, we have had a lot of 50 by 100 projects. And then the fencing, a gentleman brought up the fencing. What they plan on doing is, as the homes are built, they'll build a new fence. They probably won't, then it depends on the situation, but they usually build a new fence right adjacent to the existing fence, then the homeowner behind it can tear down their own old fence. So if you have any other questions for me, from, you know, the council or through staff, I'm here to answer those questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Virginia, I'll give you one more minute if you'd like to go back and say, so we get one minute for the speaker?
I, as well, I am not against the growth. I know the community is growing, and if there were fewer houses, it wouldn't be as big of a deal. But like I said, we haven't considered, the traffic study doesn't take into consideration the 55 new homes or the 33 new homes that are there, and the ones that are across the street. But my big concern is in emergency, like when the dam, we had issues with Oroville Dam. How does everyone get out? If we have this many people on this little tiny street, how does everyone get out safely? how does everyone get out safely? I think that's a huge issue.
Mr. Menard, I give you one more minute.
Sorry, I just real quick. Her question about the traffic study addressing the harder, I'm assuming she's referring to the harder, harder development project.
Yes.
The 31 there. So yes, there's, there's two criterias. There's the existing, obviously, it doesn't include those because they're not built. Then there's existing plus our project, which is, it was in a slide here in the presentation tonight. Then there's also one called cumulative plus project. Now, the cumulative factors in all these other projects that they're referring to. It was indeed part of the traffic study included. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, yeah. No comments from, from sitting down in the gallery. Is there any other comments from the public in this public hearing? Any other comments from the public in the public hearing that has not spoken yet? Okay, hearing none. And since there's no further comment, I am closing the public hearing and bringing this matter back to council. So with that, thank you, Mr. Menard, for answering. And I know you've already answered several of these issues that brought up. I didn't want to get us into going back and forth because it's not a Q and A time. That was a public hearing. See if I can help you summarize some of these. And Mr. Menard helped as well. You've got those lots restricted to an option. You're encouraging single-story, but if there is a two-story, you have a height window of six feet, which I have one of those in my two-story house, which, you know, you have to get up there to kind of look out the darn thing. But that is because of the privacy of the properties next to it. So they're not going to have these full-fledged windows that's at normal heights. Am I correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so there is an option. Just want to be clear. Not for discussion tonight, but if you'll indulge me just a little bit, we already talked about drainage. As things come into the city, there are provisions for properties that come into the city that have been in the agricultural community and may have some animals and stuff. So it's not like suddenly that we go in and take their animals or anything. Am I correct in that?
That is correct. So I just want to just reiterate that the only parcel that will be annexed into the city will be this 10.13 acres. So anything surrounding this site, so none of these will be included. So therefore, they'll still be in Sutter County. So it will only be these new 55, single-family homes that will be annexed into the city. And with those, you know, if you, if anyone does decide to annex in as well, you know, anyone along Romero Street, Long Street, you know, the, the city code does allow for keeping of animals. However, we will not be going out there to remove or, you know, take over.
Okay, I didn't think so. I just want to be crystal clear. And one other thing that I want to clarify because I've heard it seemingly, you know, misunderstood several times tonight. If you go back to where you showed Elmer all the way up with the blue and the, with the improvements, everyone's concerned about Elmer right now. And I get it. It's been in, there we go. It's been in the country for decades, you know, longer than any of us have been here. But at the end of the day, I heard you say in the beginning, full improvements where it's blue, and they're going to widen Elmer all the way down to Butte House. So it's not going to be the same two-lane country road that has been there for 50 years, correct?
So I might need Josh's help with this. But to my understanding with this, so Elmer Avenue, just in front of the frontage, it will be with the sidewalk curb gutter, a parking lane and a bike lane. And then from where you see in orange, so it'll actually have the nine and a half to 10 feet travel lane on both sides. Josh, if you can help me answer this one, sorry. Road widening is not my experience here. But I will have Josh chime in on what will be expected from the frontage south to Butte House Road.
So just to reiterate, the blue section is full buildout. Typically, with new developments, we require the developers to build full buildout conditions along the front edge of their roadway. So as further, as you go further south, we have some widening for, for new infrastructures going in underground. But as further developments happen to the south, there will be full buildouts coming along. Further, with the Tiara Estates that ties into Tully Parkway, there were some questions about Tully coming, or sorry, harder going north towards Tully. That is in the general plan. We actually have designs partially completed for the Tully Queens extension. And as developments such as Tully, or Tiara, that would front the future Tully Parkway come along, we're requiring them to build their half of the road. So, and that will help with the traffic issue as well because ultimately, we want Tully, the Parkway, to be the north-south from Peas down south.
Thank you. I just wanted to bring it back before I turned it back to the council to clear up the questions that we had outside of the public hearing. So thank you guys both for doing that. With that, is there any comments from the council before we entertain any action?
To the mayor? I'm so sorry. Is it okay, Vice Mayor, if I interrupt you? I'm so sorry. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to briefly state for the public, I, I get your frustration. I hear your frustration. And frankly, the city is under legal constraints on what it can do with the property out there. We have Sacramento to thank for that. They, there's, it's HCD, Housing and Community Development, actually dictates to cities how dense you can put your property. And frankly, they would love to see apartments out there. And the bad news is, is we're under state law. But you have two good news things. One piece of good news is, is the city is doing basically the lowest level of density it can out there. Those are single-family homes. Now, it's, there's 50, more than 50 of them. We get it. We understand that. But the state has their thumb out there, and they won't let us do one-acre lots or half-acre lots. I personally would love to live on a five-acre lot. That is impossible under current state law the way that things are working out now. And that's very unfortunate that the city's hands are tied in that regard. But the city can do low lots, like is being proposed here, which has the least amount of impact on development. So that's the good news. And then the other thing, I just wanted to bootstrap on the question about animals. The city also has an ordinance that basically says if you come into the city or are annexed in, you're grandfathered in. You are grandfathered in. So that's something the city has also done to help transition as the growth expands out in the countryside. And I just wanted to flag those items. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Actually, Mr. Chaffin highlighted what I was, one of the key points was, is that as the city continues to be, I'm going to use the word hamstrung by the state of California in regards to density of housing. We sit on a regional board that this is something each city is going through right now is, is density. And so when we have an opportunity, and believe me, I'm super sensitive to the migration to the west and, and the impacts that that have. And your concerns about traffic are valid, but there are also property rights, too. And this area has been, to my knowledge anyway, has been zoned residential for quite some time. And we're really doing what we can to try to mitigate some of those issues as this growth goes out. I'm not going to change your mind, I know that. But I do have a couple key other things I want to keep, can hear. Number one is, there was a concern about the, the back and forth between Sutter County Sheriff and, you know, the city of Uba City. Trust me, I lived this for 30 years in regards to fire stuff. And I, I will tell you that technology is such now that once a property is annexed into the city, the, the technologies there, those calls go directly to the city. Now, that's not going to help you who remain in the county because that's an issue. But those, this particular subdivision, those folks, when they dial 911, assuming that they're, this is, this goes forward and it's annexed into the city, will not have that confusion. I cannot guarantee you that, that those of you that live in the county in those areas that are sort of co-located with the city are not going to have that, that issue. You know, that'd be something for our fire chief or our police chief to comment on. I do think that, that the, the issue, I was going to raise the issue of animals as well. So thankfully, that's been covered. I wanted to cover sidewalks, and this might be a question for Mr. Menard. So if I, if I'm looking at the diagram or the picture up on the screen, you're actually going to put sidewalk in where it's blue and bike lane. So the issue, and believe me, pedestrian safety is huge to me. We're going to improve pedestrian safety for that section. We will continue as a city to explore any funding possible in this area, especially Terre Bueina. And we've gotten some, thankfully, to our Public Works Department. And they're meeting consistently right now in regards to the safety in traffic and pedestrian safety. We're working with a particular interest right now at Terre Bueina School because of the fact that folks are walking on roads to school without sidewalks. It's, it's a concern for us. Again, I don't think that's going to alleviate your concerns. But when these types of things which people bring forward to the city, these are the concerns that I know our staff is deeply involved with and that we have a concern with as well. And finally, I would say is that this property has not yet been annexed. I fully expect as a member of LAFCO that when it does get proposed for annexation, that you and others will be there talking to us in regards. And it's LAFCO's responsibility to make determinations about whether or not, you know, a piece of property comes into, to the city. So there will be a chance for another bite at the apple. All we're doing is zoning. And we're trying to zone for, in accordance with the state regulations and what we feel we can require for a residential development in that particular location. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other comments from the council? Anything? All right. Actually, I'm going to do a little maneuver here, just a point of personal privilege. I know that Councilmember Pasquale had to step out for a moment. He had comments he wanted to make. And out of respect for him, we're just going to take a point of personal privilege, which means basically we're going in recess for five minutes, okay? All right. With that, we're going to go ahead and call this meeting back to order. Thank you guys for being flexible with us. And back to where we're at, the Vice Mayor just concluded his comments. Councilmember Pasquale, did you have any comments on this matter?
Yes, sir, thank you. Thanks for joining.
Actually, pardon me, just point of order. Mr. Cardoza, can you close the doors, please? Thank you, Ciara.
Yes, Mayor. It's been expressed about our hands being tied. This was signed 20 some years ago, having your acre lots. I totally agree with you. Trying to shoehorn in county roads, county properties into a city. But unfortunately, our legislators in this state dictate our hands are tied, and it frustrates the blibbubajeebies out of me. We are no longer in control of our own destinies. It's dictated by people that have no idea. And I totally, totally agree with you, 100%. However, this is privately owned property that was zoned to do what it's doing. We've been thrown a curveball by the state, and we have to go by the law. We go by the rule of law. I always go by the rule of law. And I am a big proponent of not trying to rezone things. I'm not rezoning. If it was good 20 years ago, unless you completely mitigate the issues. Because my real concern is not Elmer. It's Elmer feeding off into Butte House Road. I hate going down that side of town. It's miserable. Be, be very conscious of the fact that this council totally understands that. And we're trying to do everything we can to make this right and work. Unfortunately, we're all going to feel some pain out of this. I feel, I'm in an area in town that the high school affects me. Well, when they built my home, there weren't 2,400 students at Uba City High School. So I'm affected by that as well. So I totally feel it. And unfortunately, being my hands tied, which I don't like at all, we have to do what we have to do in order to, to deal with what we're handed by the law and legislator of this state. So with that, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there any more comments from the council? Then I'll bring it back to the council for action. And I'll remind you that we do need to read the, the full motion. Through the mayor? Yes.
Move to take action on item 11, the rezone RZ 24-5 and Plan Development 20, Elmer West Subdivision, TSM 24-05, located on the west side of Elmer Avenue, APN 17-065-008. A, conduct the public hearing, which we have done. B, introduce an ordinance to the city council of the City View City approving environmental assessment, assessment, EA 24-12, by adopting a mitigated negative declaration prepared by RZ 24-05, Plan Development 20, and TSM 24-05, and rezoning assessors parcel 017-065-008 from R-1-X22 PD 20, located on the west side of Elmer Avenue by the title only and weighed the first reading.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Thank you, ma'am. We'll move on to agenda item 12, which is the Ridge Estates subdivision, general plan amendment 25-01, and rezone 25-01. And we have Andrew tonight. Welcome to the podium, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Today, I'll, this evening, I'll be presenting the Ridge Estates. So for this project, you'll be considering the environmental assessment, general plan amendment, and rezone for the Ridge Estates subdivision. You may have seen a mention of a development agreement in some of the project documents, but that has since been withdrawn by the applicant. So this project site is located on 20.76 acres, located on the west side of El Margarita Road, approximately 1,800 feet south of State Route 20. To give some background, in September of 2010, the council approved the rezoning of the site from R1 X24 to the current zoning designation of R3 and CO X, CO X24 for a proposed subdivision, which included an independent living facility, senior condo units, and associated office buildings. In April of 2022, an application was submitted to rezone back, the property back to R1, but that project was never finalized. And then in January of 2025, we have the current project as we see it today submitted. Then last month, the planning commission conducted its hearing on this project, and it recommended unanimously to adopt the resolution and contingently approve the tentative subdivision map. So what we see here today, the existing land use designation is medium-density residential and office and office park. The proposed general plan amendment will change the designation of the approximately four acres of office and office park to medium-density residential. The proposed density is at 7.12 units an acre, which meets the 6 to 14 unit an acre range for medium-density residential. The existing zoning designations for the property are office, commercial, and multiple-family residence districts. Since state law requires that the general plan and zoning designations be consistent, the rezoning of the property from R3 and CO to Plan Development will align it with the medium-density residential land use designation. Here you can see the modified standards on the table at the right, which include lot coverage, setbacks, and lot size. The modified standards of the Plan Development will provide for more efficient use of the site and better allow the property to develop at a medium-density level. So this is the tentative subdivision map that the planning commission contingently approved for the ridge with 141 single-family lots. A few of the design features that are proposed with the development include, one is the, on the interior streets, there'll be bulb-outs areas for street trees that also act as a areas for street trees that also act as a calming, a traffic calming measure. At the entrance of Escalante, there will be a center median that will prevent left turns in and out of the subdivision, just because of the closest of intersections for these three intersections. It's not pictured here, but there will be a pedestrian crossing at the north end with the pedestrian refuge island that will connect to an existing sidewalk that leads to River Valley High. There will also be half width improvements made to El Margarita Road with a 12-foot travel lane, bike lane, curb and gutter, six-foot wide planter strip, six-foot wide sidewalk, and masonry wall, and that will be all along the frontage of the project. Touching on the X24 special combining district, essentially, the designation was originally applied to properties in the area to ensure improvements and services were funded. But over the years, city policies and ordinances have since made the zone district redundant. Surrounding existing uses are orchards and orchards with a single-family residence. Both the existing and planned land uses are compatible with the proposed single-family development. A condition similar to the previous subdivision is proposed to limit lots backing up to existing homes to be single-story or use design methods such as the six-foot-high windows to maintain privacy of the existing single-family homes. And there's going to be two existing single-family homes here and here at the corners. So for traffic, a traffic study was prepared to study the impact of the project on the surrounding area. The study estimates that the project will generate an estimated 1,311 vehicle trips per day, and here you can see the breakdown in percentage of the direction those vehicle trips will be. There will be an impact to the level of service, especially at El Margarita and SR 20. To address this impact, a mitigation measure was proposed that no more than 80 single-family residences or an equivalent amount of other types of development should be allowed on a first-come, first-served basis along the corridor until the time that the Margarita Road and SR 20 intersection is either signalized or the northbound traffic at that intersection is limited to right turns only. So blocking off that left turn heading west on SR 20. In addition, a fair share analysis for the project impact shall be, will be prepared as part of this project. So here we can see some of the mitigations, traffic mitigations that are proposed as a part of this project. One, we see here the future single improvement or limitation of northbound traffic. Two, at the corner of Spirit Way and El Margarita, the developer will install an all-way stop sign and redo the striping at that intersection to mitigate some of the traffic issues caused at the AM peak hours. Three, we see that the developer will install the pedestrian crosswalk with Refuge Island. And four, the median curb on Escalante Drive. In addition, city water and wastewater collection are available to the property, and so this development will hook up to the existing lines that are coming down on El Margarita. An existing storm drain is available at the north side of the property and will be extended along with the sewer line southerly down El Margarita. An environmental assessment was prepared for this project in accordance with the requirements of the SEQA Act and the guidelines. Based upon the completed environmental assessment and identified mitigation measures, staff has determined that there is no evidence in the record that the proposed project will have a significant effect on the environment and recommends adoption of the mitigated negative declaration for this project. Based on the staff's analysis, public necessity, general welfare, good planning practices, public interest, and convenience warrant approval of the general plan amendment and rezone as outlined in the resolution and ordinance. The findings that are required to be made for the Plan Development are shown here. The evidence for these findings is provided in the staff report and resolution, and we can go over them further as needed. And then here's the recommendation to adopt the resolution and introduce the ordinance for the project. I'm not going to read it out because it's quite long. And let me know if you have any other questions. Of course, we have Josh Wolfe, our Public Works Director, and Sean Menard, representing the applicant, also here to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Andrew. Is there any questions from the council before we open up the public hearing?
Do the mayor.
Yes, sir.
The, you were talking about the sewer line. Is that going south or north?
South.
Going south.
It currently terminates at the northern corner of the property.
Okay. So it's going, how far down is it going south?
It's going, it's going to go all the way, the whole frontage of the property and terminate. I assume Sean maybe can answer.
It's the sewer, sewer's already there, stubbed out to that point.
If you could, Mr. Menard.
Yeah, as Andrew stated, the sewer, water, and storm are all at the northern boundary. They were constructed as part of the high school project. We will extend it down to, along our frontage, all three of those services.
So you're not going past it any farther south than your project? The tie-in is not south, it's to the north?
Yes. We'll only go to our southern boundary.
Okay. That answers a question. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council before we open the public hearing? All right. Seeing none. The public hearing for the Ridge Estates subdivision, general plan amendment 2501 and rezone 2501 is now open. If there are any members in the public who'd like to address the council on this issue, please provide your statement via public comment. State your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes, and I do have a card, Debbie Jones. You have the floor. Please, of course, state your name and address for the record, and then you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Debbie Jones. I've lived at 2709 Red Bed Lane for 38 years, and I'm very concerned about the traffic impact this is going to have, as we already have a big impact with the high school there. When the high school was built, we were told that the traffic wasn't going to have any effect on us down at the other end of El Margarita, but that is totally wrong. The student parking lot is on the east side, but parents come to pick up their children on the west side and park all along up and down there. It's crowded. It's an accident waiting to happen. I'm surprised nobody's gotten ran over yet. There's kids running across the road. And in the mornings, there's people, not just kids, it's parents who drive their cars. The traffic backs up from Imperial to Franklin Road. They cut through our subdivision, and we've complained to the high school, to the UBS City Police Department, and they've had officers out there, but it's not helping. And there's young children right there when they turn onto Toyin that are playing out in the street, and they cut down Camellia to come out to the stop sign there at Imperial and El Margarita to beat the traffic jam that's jammed up. And my neighbors would like to see about having a three-way stop sign placed at El Margarita and Franklin. It's dark at night there, the intersection, so the flashing stop signs would really help light it up. And we're just very, really concerned. Our neighborhood is great for Halloween. We have between 900 and 1,300 kids a year. And then at Christmas time, we decorate. We have families come through. We love it. We like doing that for our community, and we're just really concerned that nothing is being done. Nobody's hearing our complaints, and we'd like some action taken. It's narrow. It's beautiful down by the high school. It's wide. But when you get past that, it narrows up. There's telephone poles on each side. There's no sidewalks, and it's just, it's bad, and we'd like something done. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comments during this public hearing? Any other comments? Mr. Menard.
Well, Sean Menard with MHM Engineering. I represent the owner of the property. We've been working with staff for some, quite some time to get this project to where we have, where you see it today. Interesting enough, I did the original rezone from R1 to what it currently is, and now we're bringing it back to R1. Well, actually, we're going back to R2 because of the state laws. Otherwise, we would have gone to R1 and had less lots. But right now, we're at 6.79 units per acre, which is at the lowest end of the R2 zoning, which is allowed to be 6 to 14. So, you know, as from the traffic standpoint, we're probably at the lower end of the impact on the traffic. We fully understand the mitigation regarding the 80 lots and the mitigation at the intersection of El Margarita and State Route 20. And so we look forward to positive aspect of this project going moving forward. And again, if you have any questions, let me know, and I can try to answer them.
Thank you. Any other comments during this public hearing? Just a moment, please. Okay? Any other comments during this public hearing? Any other comments? I'll give you one more minute, ma'am.
I'm sorry. I forgot to also say that Caltrans Chapel has school, and it comes out on the frontage road there, and so that's also traffic congestion for us also there. And anyway, I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Final ask, any other public comments during this public hearing? Okay. Hearing no more comments, I'm closing the public hearing and bringing it back to council for discussion and action. Is there any comments from any other council members first?
Maybe just a quick one. I'm interested in, again, the mitigation measures for El Margarita and highway, yeah, B Highway 20. This intersection, as staff knows, is a huge concern for me. So what were those options again?
So the two, the two options, let me go back, were to either to signalize the intersection with lights and all, or limit the northbound traffic that's turning left going out towards Sutter, because the amount of conflicts that and time spent turning left would be heavily reduced by closing that off to people going north on El Margarita.
So obviously, the signal's a huge, a huge cost, so it's not really an option. I mean, I'm just being honest here. Correct?
Mr. Wolfe, you want to come up and speak?
I mean, let's not put it up there if it's not doable.
Yeah, the signal for right now is cost prohibitive. Staff is looking for options right now in terms of grant funding to get the ball rolling because ultimately, it is Caltrans. Right of way, they're leaning on us to perform the studies necessary for the signal.
And I know you guys are doing that, but I mean, as per this particular project, listing that as an option isn't something that we're able to consider because we can't fund it.
Exactly.
Thank you, Sean.
One thing, you're right. For our project, our number of lots we have, we couldn't afford to do it, but it is part of the AB 6900 study, so it is part of the citywide traffic impact fee, and so we'll pay our fair share for that. In the interim, the only choice we have is stop at 80 lots or provide this mitigation and remove the left-turning movement.
Right. And I, you know, I do know that you're paying your fair share as others will be, but I just thought it was a little inconsistent to put a signal here. What we're going to end up doing is a write-out only.
For this project, most likely, yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
Do the mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just to be clear, though, to piggyback on that, that's, that's Caltrans' call, whether or not they allow to put a traffic light there, correct?
Yes. Ultimately, whatever improvements happen at that location are Caltrans' decision.
Okay. So they're the ones that have to say, okay, it's time, and then they go?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments from the council?
Do the mayor. If I remember rightly, weren't they, Caltrans, looking at us to put our two cents in on Humphrey Road? Stop sign, but they won't. Okay. All right. Yeah, it's frustrating.
Any other comments from the council? I want to go back to some comments that our speaker made because my family has had residents out on Imperial. And I know exactly what you're talking about. And I know that, you know, as a council and as a member of the council, we all raised the issues because the road was horrid. It was going to bounce somebody into a telephone pole up there. And the project's the project, but I think we need to look at possibly seizing another opportunity as here as well because one of the biggest problems that we have in that whole area, honestly, is the traffic from the school and the parking from the school. Because on the opposite side, on Harder Parkway, parents aren't going into the school. They are parking all along Harder Parkway up and where the Dead End is, up over onto that Lassen, I think, on the backside. Anyway, they're just everywhere, and then you come down the other side, and you're exactly right. They're parked in the dirt, along the fence. Kids are just kind of everywhere. So, you know, the takeaway I would like to see from this, and I'm not sure if we need to get involved as a council and talk to the superintendent of UBS City Unified or where we go, but they need to help us out with this and get those parents to actually do the traffic measures that are in place and quit causing a traffic hazard. And if there's things that we can do, and I don't know what the mechanisms, Josh Haidt pitched on the spot, but it's all, you don't have to answer. This is just food for thought, spaghetti against the wall, so to speak. But, you know, if there's any way that along those avenues there that we can make them non-parking, red lines, whatever, to keep people from parking, that might help solve it. And then, you know, let our PD go out there and write tickets all day long to train people's behaviors to do what they're supposed to be doing because it, it can be horrid. I know we focused on 20, and I'm with the vice mayor. We've talked about that for a while, and write out because Caltrans says, to your point, Humphrey's is more dangerous than El Margarita. El Margarita's a time bomb. It's going to happen, you know? And we've already had one car that came north on El Margarita, went across, had a big accident about a year or so, or maybe two years ago now. But it's just a time bomb until that happens on that state highway. So, but unfortunately, Caltrans is driving that, so it's going to be that write-out. And I think, Vice Mayor, you were the first one to propose that, to just try to mitigate that, which is a good thing. Get people from going across, but get them turning right. But whatever else we can do around the high school, that would be my ask, kind of not related to this, but yet related to this, Mr. Attorney. I think we got some takeaways there that we can do. Okay? Any other comments from the council? Then I will bring it back to the council for action, and we do need to actually read B and C if we are going to take action on those.
Do the mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Move to adopt a resolution approving environmental assessment, EA 25-01, by adopting a mitigated negative declaration subject to the conditions of approval and mitigation measures, and approve general plan amendment GPA 25-01, redesignating 4.21 acres from the office and office park O land use designation to medium density residential, MDR, and introduce an ordinance of the city council of the City of UBS City approving rezone RZ 25-01 and rezoning assessors parcels 63-010-136 and 137 from R-3X24 and C-OX24 to PD 21 on 20.76 acres, located on the west side of El Margarita Road, approximately 1,850 feet south of State Route 20 by title only and waive the first reading.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, and Ms. Cole, that was a mouthful, wasn't it?
That was a lot.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Andrew, thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to Agenda Item 13, zoning code amendment 2502, revising the development standards for ADUs and junior ADUs for consistency with state law. Here we go again. Right, Mr. Libby? You have the floor.
I think this may have come up in various ways tonight. Okay, so we are updating our ADU ordinance, as you noted. So I guess for anyone in the audience or benefit of the council, ADU stands for accessory dwelling unit. These things come in a couple different varieties. The ADU has a completely independent living space, has its own kitchen, own bathroom facilities, can go up to 1,200 square feet. They can take the form of being detached from the home, being attached. They can take the form of being detached from the home, being attached, or they can, you can convert existing space. The junior accessory dwelling unit is 500 square feet in size. It is, you have to have your own bathroom, but you can actually share kitchen facilities. And that's typically going to either be an expansion or conversion of existing space. Okay, so what are some of the benefits? Well, it's an affordable housing type, doesn't require paying additional for additional land or major new infrastructure. It can provide a source of income for homeowners. It can, it's built using traditional wood frame construction, reducing costs. It allows extended families to be near one another while maintaining privacy. It can provide similar living space as apartments or condominiums for a wide range of living situations. And it can provide homeowners the flexibility to share independent living areas with family members and others, allowing older adults to age in space, age in place. And that last point really hits home with me. Some of you may have heard me say before, on my property, my mother-in-law, we have an ADU for her and provides her her independent space, yet we're there to help her when she needs it. It works out really well. So some of the recent changes. Well, I use the term friends loosely, but our friends in the legislature almost can't help themselves with changing the ADU law annually. We were just before you, last fall, ordinance 010-24, making the changes. And so here we are tonight, and I'm just going to tell you, they're making additional changes. So we will be coming forward next year with another ordinance update. So this round, so what are some of the changes? Dealing with covenant and deed restrictions, jurisdictions are limited on what they can require covenant and deed restrictions for. We did clarify our development standards, the size limits for detached and attached ADUs. Regarding utilities, we proposed to amend the development standards, clarifying that applicants may utilize existing utility connections for sewer and water as part of establishing their ADU. That's a really big one. People don't really think about it. If you don't have to pay for an additional sewer or water connection, that really reduces the cost for development, makes it a lot more feasible for a wider range of people. Applicable standards, so clarify the, we're just going to impose our objective design standards at the code section referenced. And then there's a kind of a technical cleanup of, that the city will ministerially approve the ADU or JADU or combination thereof. It's just a minor technical change and to remove some extra language at the code section listed. So we have to make findings for everything we do, as you know. This went to our planning commission September 24th last month, and it was unanimously recommended for approval. No opposition or other public comment was received. So environmental assessment's not required. It's actually not subject to environmental review, public, per Public Resources Code 21080.17. So the recommendation, conduct a public hearing and then introduce the ordinance tonight to update our ADU, JADU ordinances per the recommendation on the screen. And that would conclude my comments. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Libby. Is there any questions from the council?
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Libby, adding the ADU and being able to tap into the water and sewer, is there an uptick on that water and sewer bill? Or do they grandfather it into the existing residents?
Well, if it's water, it's, it's a metered water. So if you, the ADU's consuming in addition to the dwellings, so yes, more consumption, we would see higher sales, right? As far as the sewer, no. It's a, there's an existing wastewater connection that is now being shared by the ADU with the primary home.
That, that seemed to be a problem for me, that you're, I mean, when you, when you build a home, you, you're not assessed on the necessarily the bathrooms, but the bedrooms.
Yeah.
When you're adding more people to it, and the use goes up. And it is not our sewer's a standard cost, if I'm not mistaken. It's, it's one, one cost, right?
So the.
It's not a usage cost. It's not how much you flow through.
Monthly fee.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, and so the, the state is doing everything they can to make this housing type more affordable and encourage their development.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions from the council? Nope. All right. Public hearing for zoning code amendment 2502, revising the development standards for accessory dwelling units, ADUs, and junior accessory dwelling units, JADUs, for consistency with state laws is now open. If there are any members of the public that would like to address the council on this issue, please provide your statement via public comment, state your name and address for the record. Is there any comments on this item for the public hearing? Any comments during this public hearing? Any comments during this public hearing? Hearing none. I'm going to close public comments on this public hearing and bring this back to council for action.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Through council, does this want to have to read the whole thing or? Oh, darn.
Yes, yep.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to introduce by title only and waive the first reading of an ordinance of the city council of the city of UBA City, finding that zoning code amendment ZC 25-02 is not subject to the environmental review pursuant to Public Resources Code Section 21080.17 and approving zoning code amendment 25-02, amending table 8-5.5004A and subdivisions C and F of section 8-5.5004 of chapter 5 of title 8 of the UBA City Municipal Code relating to the development of an accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. Thank you, State of California.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. I just have a question. Was that PS I love you to the state? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Ayes have it. Put us unwillingly in compliance. So, and thank you, Mr. Libby. All right, moving along to agenda item 14. Is there anything that this council would like to be brought back at a future meeting?
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Merrament. Back two and a half, three years ago, we had said that we would supply them with $155,000. And that was predicated on full project. Have we looked at the fact that they're only going to do a portion of that and therefore not committing to 155? I'd like to bring that back for, to look at it.
Okay. Can we look at that in the future? Mr. Bendorf? Okay. Any other items from the council? All right. Then we're going to move on to agenda item 15, which is our city manager's report. You've been so talkative over there tonight, sir. Nice and quiet. Let's come back to city council reports. I'll start with council member Cole.
All right, I will focus on the big one. Last week, went to the League of California Cities with Mayor Shaw and Councilman Kirchner, and it was a great time, but I learned a lot. And that's why I wanted to go and see a lot of value in actually being a member of the league. I attended sessions on Prop 36, youth engagement, which was probably my favorite, and have a ton of takeaway there. ADUs, immigration, future tech trends, and one on, actually a keynote speaker on creativity, which was great, but it actually led into us having some creative discussion on ways to make UBA City more charming or attractive. And it was just a lot of fun conversation that I actually think we'll do something with. So that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kirchner.
Thank you, mayor. Boy, by the conversation tonight, you'd think UBA City's growing or something. Pretty amazing. Thank you, mayor. As council member Cole mentioned, we did go to League of Cities. I attended Prop 36 and the effects that that has had on the state, positive. Revenue measure possibilities, grants, and also fire protection. Gilzeiser was canceled this last week. Transit was covered by the mayor. Mosquito, we had a quarterly update on defined benefits. Couple of the insurance programs were updated. I, I would like to bring up a quick comment on, first of all, the community engagement tonight was just off the hook. I really, I like to see that kind of stuff. And I do plan on following up with the folks out there at Sanborn. One of the things that was kind of danced around a little bit was all the way back last year, the city of UBA City attempted to pass a one cent sales tax, which we called Measure D. If that would have passed, there would have been a realignment of the master tax exchange agreement, which would have, which would have allowed the city to take over the policing of that area. Now, I'm not to say the sheriff is doing this or the city's doing this, but it would have been a different type of enforcement. And so moving forward in the future, if a revenue measure is ever considered again, that might be something we, we think about. Oh, the, the signs up on Pluma Street, which looks outstanding. I got all kinds, it blew up on social media. If you guys haven't seen that, have you seen that yet? Oh, it's really cool. Kind of a misconception, a small group of people in town thinks like, well, if they're doing this, why can't they do this? And, you know, it's, it's grant funded. And if you get, first of all, staff does a great job getting the grants, but it has, it has to go towards a certain purpose. And so as long as that's communicated. And then lastly, kind of had some bad news today. I would like to bring this up to council. The food bank, so everyone's, everyone's aware of the government shutdown. The food bank is starting to get requests from families out at Beale Air Force Base. And so that is really, really concerning. And so that's, as a community, we need to be aware of that. They're an amazing partner, always have been. And so with that, I will conclude my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Pasquale.
That's the report, mayor.
All right. Vice mayor.
Thank you. I would echo the, the arch, the, the long awaited, famous arch is finally up, and it looks awfully darn good down there. But I would echo council member Kirchner's concerns in regards to, there's a fair amount of folks out there that are, are saying, why didn't we fix potholes instead of spend money on an arch? And Wade did a great job. Different pot of money, not, not eligible to take care of, of that kind of stuff. Tended the Sutter Beats Flood Control Agency, they're doing some refinancing. They're taking advantage of some of the stuff that's going on economically and therefore refinancing some of the bonds that they've issued. And they will be repurposing that money that they're going to save towards continued levy improvements. We had a city cleanup day, thank you, recology. Looked like there was quite a stream of people putting stuff, you know, getting rid of, doing their winter or fall cleaning. Tended the fire department open house, very well done, chief. Looked like there was quite a few folks traveling through. They got to see a lot of different resources, assets that the fire department has. At the SAICOG board meeting last Thursday, we finalized the, the go-ahead for federal funding. I know Mr. Wolf is very well in tune with that, as well as Mr. Bendorf. This is going to be a very competitive round of money, money, some of it for road maintenance and some of it for things like transit, et cetera. So more money coming back to us. Mayor and I attended the ribbon cutting for the E Center. If you don't know where that is, it's over here on the corner of Stabler and, and Highway 20. Eight counties? They, they serve eight counties. It's amazing, some of the stuff that they're, they're doing out of there. And are you going to talk about Mr. Simmons from Marysville? Closing memory of Mr. Simmons. He was a board supervisor and a, and a city councilman for the city of Marysville, and he passed. Very well-respected gentleman, so thank you.
All right, yeah, we will absolutely, we'll close in, in honor of Mr. Simmons, right? Thank you. Tended a lot of the same things. Yeah, chief, I stopped by as well. You guys knocked it out, those kids with those hoses, putting out those little flipping fires, and it was great. And fire extinguishers, a lot of good things going. The cleanup day, our guys that were there working with recology, I came by and checked on them. And, I mean, they were just stoked and into it, so it was a great day there. The E Center, getting back to it, was great getting them another, yet another location in UBA City to serve. But what is more significant about this is out of all those eight counties, this is our headquarters now. It's right over here on Stabler, so very good there. Transit, I went to, to that on behalf of council member Kirchner. Big takeaway there is they went ahead and authorized the purchase of eight new smaller buses to kind of modernize the fleet. They're going to be out there for the last mile of service and the dial-a-ride type stuff. So those are coming there. League of California Cities, we, we all kind of, the three of us kind of zoned in and really tried to figure out, you know, what we could hit and what was most important. And you've already heard from two of the areas. I was focused in on communications with the city and the public and the finances, looking at potential, you know, what are other cities doing? One of the big takeaways that I can tell you is we're like every other city in the state right now. Every city that was there is pretty much facing a deficit. But the one thing that I was encouraged on, and I shared with the vice mayor, he and I talked a little bit when we got back, is we started taking steps seven years ago when he and I came on the council. Put it in perspective, we're 70 to 75,000 people, and we had a structural deficit this year of 6.2 million. The city of Pleasanton, 75,000 people, 13.4 million structural deficit. So I think we've done some pretty good work over the past seven years that we've been on here together, doing everything we can to keep that off the plate. That doesn't mean our job's not done. That means we've just done pretty well so far. But when you look at what we've talked about earlier, and it kind of resonated through there, the stuff that's being forced down from our state legislatures, down upon the cities, they're doing it in a vacuum, and they don't realize what they're doing to us. And went to the, council member Cole and I went to the mayor's and council member thing, and then was also at one of the, I think it was general sessions, but it was said very clearly in one of the rooms. When the electeds leave their local districts, if they decide to go from city council or supervisor up to the big old building in Sacramento, they kind of forget about where they came from. And they just start doing things at a different level. And so it's our job to remind them, we're doing everything we can, but it's going to take the constituents, to remind your state electeds of where their roots are and where home is. Because they're making decisions that affect us, that cost us money. And you want to know why we can't fix the roads and why we can't hire more police officers and why we can't hire more firefighters and all these things. Lot of it has to do with, just, I'm going to be loose here, but the nonsense we went through tonight with, we got to adjust the, it's, it's not nonsense, Mr. Libby, but you know what I'm saying, it's just more stuff we got to comply with. We weren't really asked our opinion. And it's unfortunate. But that resonated really well. So I'm waiting to see what the takeaway is going to be in another year or two, when more and more cities are facing even larger deficits and the state's still putting the lunacy that it puts, you know, down on the, the local municipalities. The one thing that was resonating there, and I've heard you say it, vice mayor, multiple times, the government that is in connection, I think is the way you've kind of, you'll have to correct me, but the, the government entity that is most connected with its residents is the cities. We live here, we work here, we see each other every day. And the further that people get away from here, they forget about us. So, you know, we're doing everything we can. I'm waiting to see what happens in the future, but it, it's kind of sad when you sit in those classes and listen to what every other city is going through. We're, we're there. And, you know, we talked about, you talked about a sales tax. You know, we're, they refer to us as, we're still one of the sevens, you know? Which means we don't have anything to add to it. And I believe the highest, if you correct me, was it 10 something somewhere? Yeah, there's, there's a city somewhere here in the, in the state that their, their sales tax is over 10%. So every municipality is going to have to get creative. And I will tell you, under the leadership of us sitting here, along with our city manager, Mr. Bendorf, we're no longer in the box, so we don't have to think out of the box. We're, we're not even in that box anymore. We're going to figure this out, and we got to get creative. And so as we go forward, bear with us, know what we're trying to do. We're trying to thread a needle, but together, we will get it done. And we will figure it out. So that was my big takeaway from the league, is we are commonly unique with every other city in California. But I'm thankful for the leadership that we've had the past several years. We've, we've done a great job. E Center Transit, councilmember Pasquale and myself, besides scaling a 10-foot fence to get in. to get in, because we didn't want to walk around the block, we had the honor of going to the Junior Mayor's Cup. The Junior Honkers and Junior Falcons played, they're back playing each other. So they had their very first inaugural Junior Mayor's Cup and wanted to set them up for what they have to look forward to as they go into high school. So next October, you'll have that on your date. They'll be reaching out to you, sir. And, and it, of course, was open to all council members. I texted everybody, said, hey, you wanna come? It was on a Sunday, but it was great watching those kids play their hearts out and then their sportsmanlike attitudes. It was really, really good. Who won? Uba City. Uba City. Yep, yep. They, Uba City won, but as we told them at the end, it was a really good game, and we're sitting down in the end zone, and you could hear those pads popping, and they were hitting, and, but there wasn't any fights really going on on the field or anything like that. They were just, they were playing their hearts out. So congratulations to both of them. We're very proud of both of those teams. They represented the city well on Sunday. So congratulations to Uba City. Tower Plaza, just an update there, we're getting close, and we've been communicating with Josh, so you guys have seen the archway go up. It's blowing up all over the internet, which is good. As soon as it's all done, we will be putting together a opening ceremony, ribbon cutting, just like we've done other parks. And we're gonna have to pivot probably quick as a council and leadership to get that done so that we can get this thing opened to the public as soon as possible. Okay? And then the last thing I will bring back is the government shutdown and our Beale military personnel. It's not just our military personnel, but it's also our civil service employees out there as well, because military got paid the 15th. The last time civil service got paid was the first. And so been working with the BMLC, talking with them, and been well-received. I reached out as mayor this week, contacted all of our local banks. Several of them have, a couple of them had already stepped up. Sierra Central did, River Valley Community Bank did, that if they already have a banking relationship with members that are impacted, they're going to work with them. But as a city, on behalf of those affected that may call Uba City home, we've asked them to look at what other banks have done and, you know, entertain anything that they can do, because they can search their database to figure out who's, who's impacted. The next level is, I know, a good shout out to Grocery Outlet. You know, those guys over there support this community to no end, and they've already stepped up to help the impacted military. I believe it's a 10% discount, if I'm not, yeah, that's okay. 10% discount if you're military and impacted. The ask is kind of going out across the board. But also, look for things, more and more things to come out across social media, because it's about how do we relieve the pressure off of these young families? You know, you've got junior enlisted E1s through four that may have, you know, young families and whatnot. So things that we can gather and get donated to them, such as like diapers and things of that nature, that's one less thing that they can get from, not only food from the food bank, because they're already tied in, but these other organizations, it'll take some monthly pressure off of their finances to take care of, of their families.
I know that Veterans Stand Down is playing a role in collecting donations as well for Beale specifically, not necessarily outside of Beale, but from within Beale.
Yes, absolutely. So keep in tune with social media to figure out where all that's happening, because there's really no end in sight right now to when this may be, and there's real people that are getting impacted. And they're, they're right here, they're part of our community, because Beale is part of our community. So before we close, is there anything else that we've missed up here that we need to cover? All right. Then with that, we will close in honor of Mr. Simmons, former Marysville City Council and Uba County Supervisor. Thank him for his service and may rest in peace, and we will stand adjourned.